I'll read this. Access to the hybrid meeting through information posted on the Albemarle County website, specifically on the Planning Commission homepage and the Albemarle County calendar. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for public comment and specific agenda items where input is invited. So with that, I will ask for the roll to establish a quorum.
Yes, Mr. Moore.
I'm here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Miss Firehawk.
Here.
I have Mr. Karazana, Mr. Vivens, and Mr. Flavorn are absent today.
Correct. Thank you for the last minute changes to that. All right, we will move on and turn it over to staff for CPA 2021-2 AC44 RA Land Use Actions.
Thank you and good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tori Kinalopoulos, a principal planner on the long-range planning team. And I'm also joined today by my colleagues on the long-range planning team and by Scott Clark, our rural area expert, to also help answer questions today. So looking at today's agenda, we'll start with a brief recap of the most recent Board of Supervisors work session, which was on the development areas to share what the board talked about at that meeting with you all, and then move on to a recap of the Planning Commission work session on the rural area, Part One, that was on November 19th. Walk through the objectives briefly for this chapter, and then talk about the actions that are the focus of today's discussion topics. Those were included in the memo to the Planning Commission and include tools to reduce parcel fragmentation and conserve land, additional guidance for rural communities, and then if anything else is missing from the chapter, and then we'll wrap up with the upcoming schedule. So at the Board of Supervisors work session on November 20th, the board talked about development areas land use actions. So to summarize some of that feedback, the board talked about reducing parking requirements, especially for commercial uses in the county, and then all uses in activity centers, but pairing that reduction in parking with multimodal transportation options. The board talked about achieving higher density in activity centers and to look at potential public-private partnerships for structured parking and improving the permit review times for developments in those centers. The board also talked about tree coverage, including considering which tree species will be able to thrive here due to climate change, requiring appropriate trees for their location so they do not damage infrastructure or become a maintenance problem, and then broadening the fourth objective in that chapter to cover green infrastructure more generally, not just tree coverage. And then four recommendations related to lighting to make sure that safety is prioritized for lighting requirements in the development areas.
Tori, can I, sorry, can I ask a quick question? Going back on item one, the reducing the parking requirements, especially for commercial uses and all uses, paired with multimodal, is it dependent on multimodal transportation?
I think reducing parking requirements, but then making sure we're also improving multimodal transportation options so that people have other options besides driving to their destination.
Reduce parking requirements without having multimodal options in place. Okay, thanks.
And then for the Planning Commission work session on rural area land use policies, the commission talked about residential development and considering where housing may be appropriate within the rural area, but also discouraging subdivisions and considering impacts to natural resources and connected habitats, supporting industrial uses specifically that support agriculture and forestry, but also considering the potential impacts to surrounding areas. And then for the rural area plan with Action 1.1, looking at data and layers to include, such as prime soil for agriculture, existing forests, parks and trails, layers from the biodiversity action plan, and then environmental features. Then the commission also talked about tourism in the rural area and addressing potential impacts such as noise and traffic. And then for rural communities, which is one of the topics we would like to hear more from the commission about today, potentially listing out more specific uses and then including criteria or guardrails for uses in those communities. So today we'll be focused on the goal, objectives, and actions, but those are also strongly tied to the policies in the other section of the chapter. So happy to hear feedback on other sections as well. So again, similar to the memo that the commission received, focused on protecting rural area land for agriculture, forestry, and conservation, and then reducing conversion to residential development and limiting parcel fragmentation. So two ways that we can do that are having a maximum lot size for development right lots in the rural area to reduce the amount of land that ends up being used for residential lots, and then also conservation easements. And then clarifying the area planning for rural communities, and if there are other criterias or consideration that should be added to the actions, such as additional specific recommended land uses, impacts to consider, and then if there are any specific communities that should be listed or prioritized, and then overall in the chapter if anything is missing. So this is a summary of the goal for this chapter. It reflects community input heard to date and is very similar to the priorities from the 2015 comp plan. So focused on agriculture and forestry, land conservation, rural communities, especially adaptive reuse, and then protecting natural, historic, scenic, and cultural resources. These are the seven objectives from the chapter, also very focused on supporting agriculture and forestry and land conservation. And again, for rural communities, focused on adaptive reuse and then managing non-residential land uses and existing development in the rural area, including the rural interstate interchanges. So this is a summary of changes from the 2015 comp plan from a policy standpoint. There's, of course, the new recommendation for a rural area land use plan, some updates to guidance for the rural area zoning district, which are included on page three of the chapter. And then rural communities recommendations are also very similar to the current comp plan. There's the addition of community resilience hubs, and then building on the 2015 comp plan and the community input we've heard from AC44. So the current comp plan recommends the potential land uses for crossroads communities, for country stores, offices, daycare, doctor and dentist offices, community centers, and then public institutional uses such as post offices. And then similar for rural interstate interchanges, those also build off of the current comp plan recommendations, which recommends studying the Shadwell interchange, especially for uses that support agriculture and forestry. And then for the AC44 comp plan update, it also recommends, in the future, studying the Gansie Mills interchange and considering what other potential land uses could be considered, but still prioritizing agriculture, forestry, processing, and distribution. So again, updating the land use recommendations for rural communities and for interstate interchanges, but keeping them pretty close to the 2015 comp plan, and then not including actions that have already been completed, not including ones that are already requirements, and then also noting that there are a lot of relevant actions that will be found in other planned chapters, including environmental stewardship, transportation, and resilient community. So after accounting for land that has already been developed in the rural area and land that is protected, over half of the rural area is still undeveloped, but also not protected. Throughout the country and Virginia, agricultural land is being converted to non-farm uses, especially low-density residential development. So as an example, according to a study by the Virginia Office of Farmland Preservation, from 2001 to 2016, about 273,000 acres of farmland in Virginia was converted to low-density residential development. And a very important aspect of the county's rural area policies is keeping large and unfragmented parcels in the rural area to support land conservation, connected habitats, and agriculture and forestry.
Just a quick clarification.
Sure.
Let me pull your mic down. Sorry. Quick question. For non-rural uses, does that, is a house a rural use? Because it could be anywhere. Like a farm is obviously a rural use. What if, what is that, what is somebody's two-acre lot in the rural area considered in this statistic?
My understanding is that it's considered to be part of this developed land.
Okay, so non-rural.
Yeah.
Because it's not rural-dependent.
Yeah.
Okay.
So a couple of the tools that we can use for large and unfragmented parcels are Action 2.1. So you have a maximum lot size for lots that have development rights. Right now, when there's subdivisions for these lots, the average is about 6.2 acres with a minimum lot size of two acres. So this land is large for a residential lot, but also would be small for agriculture or forestry. So updating these requirements would leave more land left over for the preferred rural area land uses. And this is an example of what that could look like from the current comprehensive plan. So on the left is typical by right development with development rights. And then on the right is an example, if there was, as, you know, a particular example, four acres as a maximum lot size, and how that would leave more land left over for uses other than residential. So conservation easements are another tool. Then those are voluntary and permanent agreements to protect land and natural and cultural resources. About a quarter of the rural area is protected in those permanent conservation easements. They limit subdivision and development, and some focus on specific resources like stream buffers, agriculture, land, historic sites, or habitats. So another topic that we've heard some questions on that we wanted to point out related to agriculture and forestry is supporting industrial uses, and those include the actions 4.2 and 7.3. And the purpose of those actions is to identify industrial uses that support agriculture and forestry, especially at interstate interchanges. So we thought it may be helpful to take the language that's already in Action 7.6 to prioritize land use and zoning opportunities to support agriculture, silviculture, and related supporting industries, and include that language for the other actions. To be clear, it's not all industrial uses. It's industrial uses specific to agriculture and forestry and only at specific locations. So for rural communities, those are called crossroads communities in the current comp plan. They're intended to provide access to essential public services and basic service needs for rural residents and can include community resilience hubs. And the focus is on equitable service provision for rural area residents without encouraging additional residential development. So the updated comprehensive plan, fairly similar to the current comprehensive plan, recommends having future engagement and area planning efforts in these communities to identify if there's any land use changes that are desired, specific to individual communities. And development should be primarily through adaptive reuse of existing structures or if structures need to be replaced, having a similar building footprint. And the majority of non-residential uses would still be through the special use permit review process, which can include conditions to mitigate impacts. So there are several actions relevant to rural communities. They include allowing small-scale professional offices and existing structures, prioritizing adaptive reuse of historic structures, identifying options for allowing adaptive reuse for other uses, like country stores, and then providing spaces in existing structures and public facilities for small-scale uses, like community resilience hubs, and then having that area planning process to study communities at an individual level. So this is a snapshot of the near-term upcoming schedule. So there was the first Planning Commission work session on the rural area last month, and then today's work session, and then the board will look at the entire chapter on January 8th. We also have an upcoming luncheon learn on December 12th, which will be virtual, focused on the rural area. And just a quick note about community engagement. On our website, engage.albemarle.org/ac44, we do post all of the Planning Commission and Board meetings and other opportunities for input, including the luncheon learns, which we'll be having for every chapter. And then we anticipate quarterly in-person meetings as well. We also have a newsletter that folks can sign up for, and that will be sent out regularly with updates on when there are meetings and engagement opportunities as well. And the chapters are also being posted to the Phase 3 page of the AC44 website. So development areas, land uses there, and rural area land use, and environmental stewardship will be posted next. And there are opportunities to comment on the chapter and the actions on that Phase 3 page as well. And then for environmental stewardship, we'll have the Planning Commission work session next week and the board work session on January 22nd.
I would just add, for your all's agenda, I'll just bring, cover this right now. In January, for our meetings, we're going to meet on the 28th to take up parks, recs, and open space. We will not, so at one point, I talked about having three meetings in January. We'll not be doing that. We'll be just doing our regular one on the 14th and the 28th.
And then this is the final slide, just a brief reminder of the topics that we're looking for direction on today, but also happy to take questions and have additional input on other topics as well. Thank you.
Great, thanks. That was a great report. It's a lot of material. And also thank you for the recap on how the community can engage in this process. I know we've received quite a few emails and root questions, I guess, about how the public can engage and how they can track changes as things go by. And so there are substantial opportunities for that, and thanks for that, that update. So why don't we do this? Let's do, before we get into the meat of the discussion and before we hit the discussion points that are in the memo, the four points, are there any just high-level questions of staff on any of the material that we reviewed? I'll start with.
I was just wondering if you could explain a little bit more slowly for, for me, how the maximum lot size will, will help preserve these larger parcels. I think the map actually finally helped me a little bit, but I'm wondering how frequently this has come up in real life as far as fragmentation in the last decade or two.
A great question.
I'd like to ask Scott Clark to come up and help answer that question.
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Clark. I'm the Conservation Program Manager. And yeah, get the mask off, get the hearing aid going. Mr. Moore, I'm sorry, I only heard about half of your questions, so if you wouldn't mind saying that again.
Sure. Just more information about how the, I mean, I see this example now, how we might lead to, you know, larger parcels that remain after by right divisions happen, development right divisions happen. But I was just thinking, how, how often in real life has, has this fragmentation been occurring? And how would, say, a four-acre max, you know, affect that?
And if I could, just before you answer, just for everyone who's in here tonight who doesn't see this, it's under objective to reduce and mitigate the impacts to natural systems and cultural resources from development when it occurs, and it's Action 2.1, which is implement a maximum lot size for development rights, right lots in the rural area zoning district to significantly reduce the acreage used for residential lots compared to the current 31-acre maximum for five lots, 6.2-acre average lot size.
Right. And just before I get into the, the history on this, the four acres here is just an example. We didn't, we weren't setting a particular number, but so how often does this happen? It happens pretty much constantly. I mean, since the 1980 zoning ordinance, divisions using these rights have occurred, you know, many, many times every year. We've had a range of, you know, 100 to 250-plus new single-family dwellings in the rural area each year over that time. So in any given year, it's maybe not that many, but it adds up over time. So this is the dominant residential development pattern that we see in the rural areas, based on this pattern established by the 1980 zoning ordinance.
The, the one on the left is sort of what we see, where you've got some pretty big lots and some really small ones, and you end up with a really kind of very carved-out version of the parcel that was there before.
It varies a lot depending on the, the original parcel, because it's a relatively straightforward math exercise to figure out how many lots can I get? And do I get more big lots if I make smaller, small lots? And, you know, it's, it's not rocket science. You can figure out. So people will sometimes push those small lots bigger because, you know, two 21-acre lots and two 28-acre lots may not sell for that different a price, but they can fit in one more small lot. That's quite a jump in income from the sale. So everyone's different.
Okay. Yeah, I guess what I was trying to get at was, was how, how big of a problem does this really feel like? I'm just.
So I might be able to characterize some of that. I mean, so what would you have in the rural area in many places? And I know that affordable housing is, is of concern to you. It, you know, there, there's a lot of legacy affordable housing in the rural area that are on small lots. A lot of it, I suspect, came before the county's downzoning for a lot of this development pattern and before the, the big demand for Alamo County property. But now what you have in larger areas of the county is you have these farm estates. And so you have these large 21-acre lots. And these, these large lots, and actually one of the board supervisors at the time, they, they came with the 21 acres because they said, well, no one's going to ever have a 21-acre lawn. Well, guess what? We have neighborhoods with 21-acre lawns. And, and I could, and I don't want to call out specifically some of those neighborhoods, but it doesn't take much, much time on the county GS to find them. So the problem with those is that they, they don't do a good job of conserving natural resources. But plus, if these larger lots are way less likely to be affordable. I'm not saying that the four-acre lot will be affordable, but if it's the 11.25 acre, it's not going to be affordable. So I think we have a much better chance at achieving both affordability and sustainability with smaller lot sizes.
I have a different opinion.
But, but I would say that the, I don't know that they necessarily need to be clustered in the way that that is, depending on one resource or on the site. I would also say, with those 21-acre lots, I know that the way that those come is once you've used up the development rights, you can make as many 21-acre lots as, as you want. And so, but the issue with the 21-acre lots is that they have to be 21 acres. They can't be smaller unless it's specifically a rural preservation development, right, Scott?
That's right. The, the only way to use those 21-acre rights, division rights, in terms, are confusing. As a smaller lot is through an RPD, a plus or subdivision. But yeah, these, generally speaking, those, that 21-acre base zoning is going to develop about that pattern of 21-acre or larger lots, and they often are somewhat larger.
So, so I mean, I see this 21-acre lots as just as much of a problem, if not more, in some ways than these, these other four-acre lots. I would say for the, in the picture that's shown, the second 21-acre lot, we see over here that it's, it's 32 acres, you know. I would, we, instead of that additional 21-acre lot, wouldn't it be nice if we just had another four-acre right there? I, that's what I would say is that I think, and we don't even allow that now, really, with that, unless it's specifically a rural preservation development. So I think we may want to consider that pattern as well. That's kind of maybe, and then we'll go to your comments.
We need to trap Scott here, although we probably need him a lot because even though you said the math wasn't rocket science.
I just have remedial clarification question before you go.
Go ahead, yeah.
So just to clarify, what we're talking about is, you know, this is hypothetical, right? This is one example where you've got four acres. You've chosen that as five, four acres. It could be five, five-acre lots, in which case the benefit would be less.
The, the image on the left is not hypothetical. That's the current, which is the 31-acre maximum, cumulative maximum for the five.
Yeah, just talking about the right side.
Yeah, the right side is just one example of many possibilities, except that there is a lower limit somewhere, and it's currently two acres. The reason being that because these lots are in the rural areas and don't have water or sewer service, you have to have enough room to accommodate wells, septic fields, and backup septic fields. So pushing below two acres gets very difficult.
Pushing less than that.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, Karen.
So another, a different perspective, I guess, on looking at smaller lots is that it's true, they're more affordable, right? So get that. I agree with that. We get it. But they also then are more likely to develop. So for example, we have an estate down by where I live, where they divided it up into a bunch of these 21-acre lots. It was a large estate. The original house is still there. The outbuilding is still there. Only one lot is sold of those in the last 20 years because of the price. There would be, if they made them a bunch of little small ones, they probably would have all sold. So we're, if, if the goal is to have less development in the rural area and we make the lots much more affordable, you help affordable housing in far-flung, more far-flung areas, but you see more, you're going to drive development in the rural area. So when I, like, when I look at risk of development, I look at the lot size. And the smaller the lot size, the greater the development risk. The other thing, to your point, as like people have large lots, it, it's also not the corollary, like you just said, that it, it's somehow like more nature-preserving because of these amazing riding mowers that people can actually mow their 20-acre yard or whatever. But I really want to caution us that if you, I mean, I think, I would be more comfortable with something like, for, for example, we don't have the rural area plan. We're saying, after the comp plan, then we'll have this rural area plan. I would rather be more specific in where those smaller lot sizes might be appropriate. You know, whether they're, you know, able to access fire and rescue or other things, like be more intentional, instead of just saying, the whole rural area of Alamo County, we're going to let lot, smaller lots, and you're going to see a whole peppering of sales occurring because you've made it affordable. So I just really, that's, there's a reason why the county has set it up this way way back. It wasn't because they didn't get that smaller lots were affordable. And the other thing is, and somebody probably twists my words and say, I argued for unaffordable housing. But, I mean, I live on a two-acre lot in the rural area, in a, in a small community where people walk to each other's houses and everyone's friends and all that good stuff. Right, but we wouldn't, I don't know that I would want to have two-acre lots all over the place. So I know that the other criticism of these sort of 21-acre lots that I heard from one of my colleagues in the audience from the organization was it's, you know, it's, it's too, 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 too large to mow and too small to farm. Now, there are a lot of truck farms, you know, those sort of 10, you can get a really amazing garden on a 10-acre plot and still go to the farmer's market and sell stuff. So it's not really, depends on what your crop is. But I guess I just, I just wanted to throw that caution out for discussion.
Well, I think you raised some valid points, and I think this is just one potential. I, I think when the Natural Heritage Committee talked about this, one of the things that we all agreed upon was that the large lot subdivisions were an issue in the rural area. We're seeing a proliferation of those large lot subdivisions, and they're very destructive.
Right, because there's enough, enough people with means to buy a bunch of 21-acre parcels and put their big house on it or whatever.
Yeah, and they're, and these are big houses. These are million, multimillion-dollar houses. So there's, these are most definitely not affordable. And so, so now whether this is the right solution or not to address those large lot subdivisions, I don't know. But I think that's worth a discussion. I think there's some other things that, that we've called out in the Natural Heritage Committee, what we call barcoding, where you have these, to maximize development rights, people will make these long, skinny, narrow lots, particularly where you have steep slopes or a lot of streams or other areas, so they can get every single lot that they possibly can of it. You end up with these really awkward, skinny lots. You look what's happening over in the valley right now with the fire that's going on. Well, when you have these long, skinny lots, you can't do controlled burns. You can't do any kind of management of that forest anymore because you made it such an awkward shape. So if we're talking about, you know, climate and, and connectivity, that we can't really manage those lots. So another thing, so my point is, we may want to look beyond just this, but at a range of policies to deal with the, the development pattern in the rural area in combination with the rural area plan.
Yes, I think it'll come later, right?
Can I make one other point?
Yeah.
Sorry. So the other thing we have talked about in past meetings too, and I'm going to channel Julian now. If he was here, he would be starting on his stick about farming and whether they're real farms, right? Because the idea that you can have a large estate and you can, you know, let, lease your land to someone to put some cows on there and call it a farm. I'll make fun of one of my neighbors without naming them. I asked them, how's your petting zoo going? They, they have cattle, but they don't really sell the milk from them. They, that was too much work, it turned out. But they, it looks very rustic with the cattle there, but that, you know, there are, you know, the idea of like, I'm going to cut hay on my property and sell it to you. Maybe you could cut hay on your property and sell it to me. They can stick the bales in the corner. We've both made a sale. We both had a crop. Did we, are we indeed farmers, right? So it does make it affordable for someone to, because we give use value taxation. So you're getting a lower tax rate for a farm, but are all these estates really farms? Or are some of them just, you know, taking advantage of a program that we put in place? I think the heart of it was to support farming. I think that was the intent. But I think we do get a, a number of, I'm going to call them some faux- But I think we do get a, a number of, I'm going to call them some faux farms. I don't know what else to.
And these farm, these farm estates are perfectly examples of that. You can drive some of these places with like these big mansions and the, someone comes by and like, I think that's someone that services the whole neighborhood and comes in like haze, you know, you know, once a year or something when the successor's coming by. Um, but I think the, the other issue with the current development pattern is, is there's many areas where you can maximize out, all your development rights, and you still keep your land use because of that twenty one acres. At least, at least if you put the cap at five acres, if you maximize your development rights, those would drop out of land use. So I think coming up with a cap so that if you, if you are maximizing your subdivision, that you lose that land use benefit. Because we pay a penalty to the city of Charlottesville, um, both in funding for schools and for, um, and revenue sharing for every property and land use. So.
Right.
So if someone.
So that's what we're saying, is we can't examine these policies in a vacuum. Nathan was trying to get a word in.
Yeah, I was actually just going to kind of echo you a little bit and maybe channel Julian's wisdom. But I think, you know, when we talk about, I know some successful farmers in Alamo County, right? There are several who I'm, a couple of pals with. Um, but if we're talking about the farm economy of Alamo County, all the stuff we've done since the seventies is failing. Right? Our farm economy has a, an average of income of negative sixteen thousand dollars a year per farm. Um, so if that's the farm economy, what is that adding, right? And I'm not saying we shouldn't maybe have a good vibrant farm economy, but these trimming around the edges things aren't doing it. Um, and so if that's something we're really serious about, I don't know if like, you know, these four acres or five acres or three, whatever we want to say for the, 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 the smaller subdivision rights. I don't know if that's going to really move the needle much one way or another. I mean, I think if we really cared about this kind of thing, we'd, we'd talk about new efforts for, for producer co-ops and training programs and high value, you know, crops and products and, and, you know, onsite, uh, processing again for high value add kind of stuff and subsidized financing for young producers to get in the game, all these kinds of things that, I, I haven't seen on the table anywhere. Um, um, and that's, you know, again, if that's the part, really a priority, I see like vibrant farm economy, vibrant farm economy, I don't actually see around us a, a vibrant farm economy in the way that, one county to our west, we do.
Can I, um, see if I can, this is all really helpful. Hopefully staff is, jiving with this, that's the word. But I want to make sure we also answer your questions. And I have one question related to a lot of what we're talking about. Cause I'm, for me, there's like two channels, one's afforded, well, one's development and one's preservation, right? To state the obvious. Those are the two things that we're balancing. The other thing is, if you think about a developer who's going to come into the rural area, let's say it's a, I don't know why we can't, I would say, let's just say pick up Bundoran, for example, or something that comes in and they're, they're, there's a large tract of land. And is there, uh, this question, I guess, for us to think about, is there, by, by, by creating the scenario on the right, are we limiting the ability to accommodate or address natural features on the land? That might be accommodated by a smaller lot somewhere and larger lot somewhere else, like the scheme on the left. In other words, eleven point two acres might actually have a development site that's only two acres in size. The rest of it is critical slopes and forested land.
Like my, I have a two acre lot, but most of it is really undeveloped.
Yeah, so would you not, by, by looking at the, the right side, are you, and maybe this is the goal, but, you're limiting, you're, you're making something that's a lot more homogeneous, right? That you're limiting their ability to, look at the land itself and design lot sizes based on the topography and the layout, that make it both affordable and developable. So I think, I'm, I'm just wondering is, this would be a counter, not an argument, but a counter thought. Are there, uh, is there flexibility that we would be giving up by going with a, um, maximum lot size?
Well, I mean, I think that the fact that this was chosen for pretty small cumulative acres here, like if we were looking at a property that was, you know, five hundred acres, um, is, if we're talking about like, for example, the properties that Bundoran derived from, then you would have that flexibility with those smaller lots. In fact, you could basically do what Bundoran did and take those smaller lots and put them in, in less sensitive areas, leaving larger, larger residual, um, farm tracts.
But you wouldn't have the ability to have diversity, right? It would only be, would be a maximum lot size. So if the maximum lot size is four acres, you'd only have giant parcels and then four acre lots.
Correct.
Locked in, whereas in reality, you now have twenty one acre lots and a few eleven acre lots and a few, two acre, I don't know, thirty two acre lots.
I think one of the problems is, is that, um, when, as I said, first of all, when you have these long skinny lots, that eleven point two five acre lot may, may be a good example. Um, it's not even the most extreme example that I've seen. You can't manage those, it's hard to even know when you're on your own property unless you've just put flagging everywhere. You actually measure those out and look. Um, and so doing something like a controlled, controlled burn or selective cutting timber or doing any of that stuff becomes impossible.
Right, but like, so you would, if you had a bunch of two acre lots, that's the same problem.
Well, correct, for the two acre lots, that's true, but you have a larger area that is manageable. That larger area, particularly.
Theoretically, I mean.
Theoretically.
I, I guess like, just to, um, where I'm coming down with this is that it, I, with, with, just saying that this applies to the rural area.
Yeah.
I have real heartburn with that. Without having a rural area plan, I would rather be more intentional. I'd rather pause this idea and say, where would this be appropriate in the rural area? Which parts of the rural area, you know, uh, would, would this make sense for? You know, for example, there's in northwestern Alamo, there's some really steep land. You know, like where, you really need a lot of lot to be able to find that one spot you can put the house on.
Yeah.
Um, so you know, wouldn't do any good to make a bunch of two acre lots going up the slope there. Um, so I, I, I guess I just, I, I think, well, I'm just very uncomfortable with it. I just put it that way. I just don't, I, I see it driving more development in the rural area. With the smaller lots, without any notion of where those would be appropriate. So I would rather pause that to a future date when we have a rural area plan. And we're being more intentional about what parts of the county, where would this make sense? Where do these, where do people, if you're going to drive more development, all right. We're still to forty five minute response time where I live for fire and rescue, two hours from the injury to the hospital.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I would hate to see more two acre lots in that area because we're already not making it.
Well, and one basic question, I guess I have, and I'm, I'm leaning towards where you're coming from, I, maybe others are too. Who determines the minimum lot size? Oh, sorry, maximum lot size. How does that determine?
Uh, the minimums and maximums are set in the zoning ordinance already. So that, that thirty one acre maximum for the five small lots, is set by ordinance and the two acre minimum is.
Could you say that last part again, Scott? It's the heating is like really loud.
So, uh, the thirty one acre maximum for the five, uh, development rights that were assigned to it, to a lot that existed back in nineteen eighty.
Yep.
Um, that thirty one acre limit was established, I, I believe in the nineties and has applied ever since then.
Yeah, gotcha.
So that's in the zoning ordinance. The two acre minimum is also in ordinance, so there's not flexibility on that.
Understood.
And what we're talking about here, and I have to point out is, we're talking about a maximum, uh, without changing the minimum, we're not proposing at all that two acre minimum go smaller.
So you're saying that you can go up to four, eh, for example, on the right, you could go to four, but you can't go less than.
Six or a lot, right, exactly.
You could go up to whatever that, so whatever that maximum lot size is.
For those smaller development rate lots.
That's my question is, how do you determine what that maximum lot size is?
Well, right now, if somebody does, uses all five at once, then it's pretty obvious that you can only use thirty one. If somebody uses them one at a time, you got to track how big every lot was that was created over the years, and it's all tracked in the subdivision plots. So the number of rights remaining and the number of acres used in previous divisions is always tracked.
Okay.
When somebody comes back and says, okay, I want to make my fourth lot now, we can look, I didn't say you can, you've got seven point three acres left, not a free for all.
So you're not saying that in a, in a subdivision that say it's a hundred acres, that you have the ability to go as small as two acres, on five lots, but you can't go any bigger than six, or you can't go any bigger than eight. You're not, that's not what you mean by.
Excuse me. It averages out to a little over six. But just as we showed it here, as long as the total is thirty one, you could do four twos and a, an eighteen or something, and you're still under thirty one. It's confusing. It's confusing.
I, I thought I was tracking to that last.
You guys get this? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I do. I mean, as I said, this whole policy is convoluted.
Yeah, it's hard to understand.
And I, and I actually kind of wish that when we do the rural area plan, we could revisit this entire policy. However, so I'm sorry, I'm going to be rude and interrupt you for.
Okay, sure.
The thirty one acres. Uh, is that what you're talking about as a maximum lot size?
It's a maximum for the five lots cumulatively.
Yes, okay. So then when you say implement a maximum lot size, that's for the five lots?
For the five small.
Five lot division, however you divide it, as long as none of them are less than two acres.
Okay.
And understand that doesn't change the overall density in the rural areas.
No, I get that, yeah.
Adjustment, it's not a major change to the permitted pattern. It's not a, any change to the density overall.
So that.
It's just trying to limit the impacts of the smaller lots.
So to get, yeah. So on the right side, you might have said to, maybe this is completely wrong, but you might have said to the landowner, we're going to limit you, or to, maybe this is part of the rural area plan, we're going to limit it to four acres. The maximum lot size is going to be limited to four acres.
Right, so you get a, instead of a range to, two to something, you've got a range of two to four.
So who sets that four? Who sets that maximum?
It's, it's established in the zoning ordinance, so the board.
For, by parcel or?
No, for everybody in the rural area. Yeah.
Okay, and so the county establishes that maximum number.
Right.
We don't know what that number is yet. Right?
No, you all on the board would have to decide on what was an appropriate number, and we would obviously try to help, but.
And you're getting to right where I'm headed. So isn't that something that would be better suited during a rural area plan? Because you're starting to get more detail on that, okay.
Well, and, and I, I think the point we were at with this particular action in the draft chapter is not, four, four is the answer. This is an issue we need to address. And could that be addressed in, in concert with that other action about the land use plan? Sure.
So what you're saying is, so what we're, what we would be giving you feedback on is in concept, are we conceptually in agreement that, setting a maximum lot size is okay.
Would have some benefit to the rural areas. Whereas if you felt, you know, that's a terrible idea, that's not going to do anything, or it's going to make things worse, then, okay.
And it's blanket, right? It would be across the entire rural area. It wouldn't be specific to certain parcels.
It would just be the whole rural area.
That's what I'm saying, okay.
I have a, a, a really broad question in this number.
Thanks Scott.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to, a really broad question. This number may not be available, but, um, do we know if we were to tally up all the, the development split off rights, still existing that haven't been split off yet since nineteen eighty? I mean, how many are there? At some point, we're going to, they'll be either used up or not, right? We don't know that, do we?
Yeah, a long time ago, the Thomas Jefferson Plan District Commission did a map,
Yeah.
of like all the lots and said, here's what it would look like if they're all developed. And it was, everyone freaked out and, and then somebody poo-pooed the map and said, no, it'll never really happen like that. So, because they don't have enough water, they don't have, road access or whatever, whatever. But yeah, that has been done.
Okay.
It's available. The county knows all the lots.
Yeah, yeah.
They're all, all the plots are, you know, there on the website.
I just didn't know if we'd done the, the arithmetic on that.
So we're about halfway through the work session, just to keep an eye on time. So I guess, I guess I'll pose this question. Are we at a point where we feel that we are supportive of action two point one with the caveat that, it will be determined, the maximum will be determined during the rural area planning process?
I would suggest one change to that action item, which would say, and just add, and other, and other means of addressing large lot subdivisions, just to make it a little bit, to give us some flexibility and, and how we address that action item.
So, and now I can answer to your question. I agree with you. And, uh, to answer your question, Fred, all I can come out with is maybe, because it all depends on what would get developed. I, I just, if you just said it right now tonight, like, yeah, we're good with it, just going in the comp plan, blah, blah, blah. And I'd be like, okay, we're, we're asking, we're accepting that we want more growth in the rural area.
Right.
That's what we want. That's what the county wants. Or is that not what the county wants? Cause I, I, I guess like, here's, here's just like devil's advocate, because I work on a lot of land management stuff in my job. And it, you know, you could say, well, if someone had twenty acres, you know, that's one, or twenty acres, but if it was, thirty one acres, man, it would be really a conservation parcel. You can't make that argument. That, 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 we don't know what they're doing with their land. Maybe they're clearing the whole thing and it's a solar panel farm. I don't know. It, it, you, you just don't have enough information to make that claim.
So the, the statement, the way it's written here is, implement a maximum lot size for development rights, right lots in the rural area zoning district. Why? To significantly reduce the acreage used for residential lots, compared to the thirty one acre maximum for five lots. Six point two acre average size. I think, I guess.
It, it's make, yeah, it's making an assumption. Like I said, that if you have more land, it's going to be in crops or it's going to be in forest conservation or something like that.
And to your.
You might just clear the whole thing. You brought up Bunduran. You know, it would be better, in my opinion, if the, yes, if there had been smaller lots. A lot of people put their house up on the hill, and I, I saw Bunduran before it was developed. I toured it multiple times. And then they cleared that, they put the house on top of the hill, and then they cleared all the woods. So they could have this view out to the, so they, in other words, the impact was very high.
What if we said something to the effect, or if, maybe you don't, we're not like wordsmithing here, but to get the point across, action two point one, consider implementation of a maximum lot size for development rights in con, in concert with, or in, what's the word I'm looking for? Concert with a rural area plan or the rural area planning process.
Future rural area.
Future area plan process.
And, so it's not done in a vacuum.
And the other thing is to add into what you were saying, a maximum lot size or other, ways to manage that. So that would be something, I guess, that we would agree with, right?
I could live with that because it would be in con, it would be in context of an actual look at the rural area. We've all talked about, we don't, and look at this one giant homogeneous zone, because different parts of the county are quite different.
Cool. All right, moving on to bullet number two, if, if the commission supports other tools to reduce partial fragmentation such as, conservation easements.
Yes, but I would, I would add from, for me, I would add some criteria to that. I think that, there's not enough acknowledgement, several places in the, in the, in the plan, it just, it says acres protected as if the areas under conservation easement, are all protected the same way. Um, and as I pointed out before, you have open space easements that you can, you could take that, you could clear every tree on that property, and you could put it into high intensive agriculture, you could do whatever you want. That's, not the same kind of, if your goal is tree protection or habitat protection, you have not protected it.
Yeah, an easement doesn't necessarily mean landscape conservation. It can just.
Correct. So I think the kind of conservation easements we need is we need specifically to bring back the ACE program. But with more protection for natural resources.
Which I think is in here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it talks, yeah, it talks about ACE, and I made a note in the email I sent around. The ACE committee, before it was disbanded, had actually developed a criterion for, using the biodiversity action plan maps to give extra points for, purchase of conservation rights to the ACE program. So that, that we would be achieving more than just open space and only looking at ag soils, for example.
Correct. And I think too, I mean, I think they already made this change, but I think too, when we accept an easement, we should require they have stream buffers. You know, we should require, you know, minimum conservation standards on those properties we're getting easement on.
I think that's good.
So action three point one, is that, that seems to hit on what you both are talking about and, is in alignment with that, including the, completing the scoring system piece.
Yes, yes.
I kind of want to, uh, bring up at least a question, uh, is, is to like, what is our long-term vision for how much land we want in conservation easements? We already have a, uh, I don't know, much valid statistic that a quarter of the land is. Um, and, and how far are we taking that? Uh, and, and I wonder like, like, and, and how much then is, is being pulled out of, of tax revenue with the, with the, 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 the land use tax deferral program? And how much is, I mean, I'm being a little rhetorical, but also kind of make it a point.
So it's, it's interesting, well, first of all, every time a property goes under conservation easement, its actual value drops to the land use value. The benefit of that is, is that we, from day one, we stop paying a penalty to the city of Charlottesville. So we're saving money every year for every property that's under conservation easement. That's more money for schools, um, for, for roads, um, and, you know, another infrastructure.
for, for roads, and, you know, another infrastructure. So that's, that's important feature. As I said, too, that, that statistic about the lands under conservation, well, what kinds of conservation? I have an issue with the action item that talks about a cap of lands under conservation, or at least implies a cap. It's, I think it's one point one, the fourth, fifth bullet. Includes an overall acreage or percentage target for land under conservation in the county? Correct. I think if you made that goal more general, if we were to say, come up, I'm, I'm okay with coming up for conservation goals, like, let's set a goal for how much of Alamo County we'd like to remain forested. Let's set a goal for, you know, how, you know, are increased stream buffers by this much, or preserve this much agriculture? But, but just making the assumption that a conservation easement equals the conservation that we're trying to achieve, I would ask, what kind of conservation is that?
True. I mean, that's a fair question. I think I, I also kind of approached this, you know, from the, the different, more, yeah, kind of in the urban area here, where I live at least, but yeah, I think about these things countywide, and, and how much do we really want to preserve in amber? And, 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 and rather than allow for the kind of organic dynamic changes that just happened in a community that happened in a, in a, in a place. Yeah, I mean, there was a time in Alamo County when we built housing on small acreage in the rural area for people that were near their, their porities, or near where they worked, or down in Esmond or whatever, borders. Like, like, you know, we don't allow that at all anymore. We have like lots of neighborhoods out there that would be not allowed, period. And, and do we want to, you know, make sure we never ever can do that?
Well, I think no matter what happens, I think there's still gonna be some of that. I mean, I think there, there's now. I mean, I don't think that that's, even when you get an easement, typically you leave behind some development lots. It's not, you don't erase all the development rights off the property. The other thing I'd say too, is that as part of that rural area plan that we need, I think part of that process would be identifying the resources that we want to protect, right? Saying, well, this is how much of something that we, we want to protect of this resource.
That's bullet four.
Dinner. Includes a geographic analysis of conservation needs in the rural area and identifies an approach for designing, designating and protecting focus areas across the rural area.
Right. I, I guess if I could, just the idea of the percentage target, it's not, it's not how you would really intelligently go about getting more conservation easements by saying, okay, so first of all, for some context, our county has the most conservation easements just about.
Yeah.
We, we, and the part of that is because we have great land conservation groups who are headquartered here, and they work really hard, and have a very aware citizenry. So we have a lot of them. I'm not saying we're like all done. However, you know, instead of saying like, oh, it's a, it's a twenty-two percent, I just made that up. So it should be twenty-seven, you know? That's not how you would go about it. You would say things like, let's try to get conservation easements for sensitive drinking water watersheds. Let's try to get conservation easements for major habitat cores that are identified in the biodiversity action plan. And then you seek those landowners out and try to work with them, and then try to make their easement more conservation minded, right? So it's not just like a bunch of lawn saying this is a historic view, and that's it. So, yeah, I think I, I just wouldn't put it as percent target. I would rather be more, have strategic
Yeah.
places where you would seek them.
That's.
Which you can identify with the data that we have now.
Sure. And I, I think I appreciate that distinction very much. I mean, like, when it comes to protecting our water, for example, that's key, that's key, like for everybody. And other things that others would add to the list too.
Yeah. Oh, I was just gonna say, and there's also even, there's, I know landowners who have come back and said, hey, listen, when I got my easement, it wasn't very protective. It was just an open space easement.
Yeah.
And they've come back and they've worked with nonprofits or with the county to rewrite the language of the easement to be more protective.
Right.
So it's not even just getting more lands under conservation easement. It's also, you know, working with people to even fix some of the easements that are out there. So it's, it's a broader.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, just focusing on the bullet here, if the commission supports other tools to reduce parcel fragmentation such as utilizing, I think that's a blanket, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I guess the follow-on question is, if so, are there other tools that we might suggest to help reduce parcel fragmentation? Is that a, was that like, were you trying to lead us to that, or is that a no? We don't want to talk about that?
No, that was helpful. I think we were, you know, looking for clarification, which we, I think we've got on the two tools that we included under that today. And then if there were others that maybe you all felt were missing, or should be clarified or emphasized from the chapter.
Got it. And you're looking at, when you say the tools that have been identified, you're looking at that action number one point one? Okay. And that's all part of the rural area land use plan, right? Okay. Okay. So there, were there any, any others? I know you touched on a few, but are there any other specific methodologies that would help reduce parcel fragmentation that you would suggest? Well, well, yes. I mean, I, I mentioned one of them, which is, I, I think we do need to deal with large with, with lots, lots that are narrow and that you can't, or awkward, and that aren't manageable. I think there's some, you know, lot configurations where we probably need to establish a.
You could have a minimum frontage that would deal with the skinny problem.
Another one. Yeah, it's a good one. Or, I mean, or even if you came up with like a length to width ratio, that like the, the length, the length to width ratio shouldn't be bigger than X, because there are some that are so bizarre.
Right, like our county currently discourages pipe stem lots, for example. We have a ridiculously long ribbon driveway and this weird blob at the end.
Okay.
I mean, it, yeah, it's probably enough in there. I mean, I would just, you know, there's other things we could talk about to encourage the rural economy, like, for example, some, some communities have rural business incubators where, like, let's say you've, you're growing a bunch of fruit, but you don't have a commercial kitchen. So they have kit, kitchens, assist, these are USDA programs, small building, like an old school or something. You can come in and you can use the pressure cooker to get all your jam jars jarred, or whatever, and have it for the farmer's market. You can come in one day and do all your vinegar bottling, you know? And, and you don't, and those are things that are supported through grants and whatnot. And it's not a big footprint, but it allows all those people, maybe on those smaller farms, to be economically viable. So there are plenty of other programs we could look at. And then the county could, like, I don't know, it's a third rail, but they could actually look at their use value assessment program and what qualifies as a farm. So they, they certainly could, could, could go there.
Put your hand right on that third rail, Karen.
That's right.
But I think, I think the issue of, you know, it, it's not, you know, we've looked at this so far as in terms of like what's allowed. And I think, I think the, the point that you brought up, Nathan, about like, that if we really want to promote agriculture and rural preservation, you need to provide, you know, I, I think the, the use of land over time goes to whatever the most profitable use of that land is over time. So if we, if we want to preserve land, we need to provide uses of land that are sustainable that, that people can make a profit on. If we want to see more agriculture in Alamo County, we need to be supportive of agriculture, of, of real agriculture. So I think that that, that's a piece of it too, is encouraging the things that we want to see, not just making rules to prohibit the things that we don't. Yeah, that's right. And I think that would be part of the rural area plan as well, that process. So then the, the bullet number, what are we on? Three, I think? For area planning process, for the area planning process for rural communities, but additional considerations or criteria, if any, should be added, such as specific recommended land uses, along with those already listed, which could refer to the new uses criteria on page three, and/or listing specific locations.
This is the uses.
Yeah, this is the uses. And I'll just throw out something that one of the absent commissioners and I talked about yesterday that was raised as something to think through, and that is, I don't know if this is the right term, but artisan sales?
The same comment, like art studios.
Yeah, they go.
Small footprint, it, you know, probably mostly inside your house.
Exactly. Right, there's one.
Yeah.
And what about, this is one that I think needs more definition, but restaurants and wineries as an accessory use? Well, I mean, I think there's, the sorts of things can go too far, for sure. I mean, I think that there's, that could be a big, long conversation. So as an accessory use, so is it, if we had the ability to review them on a case-by-case basis? Yeah, I mean, I think.
An SUP where you could decide whether or not that was appropriate. I mean, right now, we, you can bring your picnic to the winery, but we really are not, other places I've been, people have food available, or not just drinking and.
I, I think where you can say that the food being provided is local food, that, that for me changes it. I don't know how you can actually code that, like make that a regulation. I mean, I, I don't think you can. I think one of the, one of the things I would say though, is that we have a lot of historic locations in Alamo County that used to be taverns. And from, from my perspective, if it used to be a historic tavern, I think that we should, without a special use permit, provided they meet, you know, conditions about, you know, performance standards about water usage and inseptic and so forth, allow them to be a tavern again.
I don't know if I'd go that far to say everything it was a tavern, but it could be a, it could be a consideration for someone who comes in for an SUP and asks for that. I mean, I, I, yeah, I think it would be nice if you were, have some of those type of things. I've got a tavern sign in my house, but it's not open for the public.
I had another question, I guess. I think it's related to the same thing. It's not one of the locations that you mentioned in here. So it's not appropriate, just, or applicable, let me know. But objective four point five, revise the regulations for special events, so they are only possible on registered historic properties or landmark properties with property ingress and in, and egress onto public roads under VDOT supervision. To me, that just popped out as something really specific.
I think that, that actually, I don't know if staff already had that idea from before, but I did make the comment at a prior meeting that right now, you could just take any outbuilding on your property and say like, this is a special event center.
Yeah.
And so the idea was to try to narrow down, you know, because we had, we have had some, they, they have had a lot of public opposition, having come forward, but we, right now, it's really loosey-goosey.
So, so I agree.
Yeah, so that was, I think that was what that was trying to get at, by saying it had to be an actual historic property, it had to have adequate road access, ingress and egress, et cetera.
So what? Trying to think of how to ask my question. It just is a very specific regulation to, so if somebody were to come in and decide that they were, they purchased a large piece of property, and they wanted to go through the process of having special events on that property, and they didn't have, for example, a an event space, and they decided, they've decided that they wanted to build a event space on that property.
They can if they have a winery.
The key to it.
Or a distillery.
Or a historic property?
Well, the, the county already made it so that if you had a, a house, historic house with five rooms, you could turn into a little boutique hotel with special permission. Like, and it had to be an historic building, because they wanted to encourage people to be able to, you know, adaptively reuse a building, or be able to afford to hold on to that property. So that, that I, that I think that's where that came out with. I mean, personally, me, if it was up to me, I would get rid of the whole thing that you could just apply to have special events just because you have buildings on a rural property. It seems bizarre to me. It's, that's his existing now in our code. And it doesn't mean you get permission, but it seems like non-zoning, like, oh, wow, you know, any land with an old shed, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call it my, you know, I'm gonna get married in my shed. I mean.
I only highlight it because of the specificity of it, because we are saying.
It was trying to rein it in, and I would get rid of it entirely, like nothing, like no applying for event spaces if it is just because you have rural land.
Well, I'm gonna be over here as part of the fun caucus instead.
Ah, okay. Some of these hearings where.
I, I don't know that I, I, I mean, I don't know that I would. I mean, I've been to some, you know, concerts on farms where there were a hundred and fifty people, and it was super fun.
Well, they probably got a permit to do an event, like, for example, the Howardsville Boat Landing, they have the bateaux all land there, and they all camp out. And they have a good old party, but it's not, they don't have an event permit to every weekend have a hundred and fifty people camping there.
Oh.
Right? It's just once a year, and it's fine.
Isn't that what a special event is? That's how special events define that, right? And that's what four point five says, revise the regulations for special events.
Yeah, this is saying so they can only do on a, a historic property or landmark property.
Right, so to your point.
Yeah, you know, I don't know.
He wants, he wants parties everywhere, and I don't, I don't want me to be able to have your.
I don't, I don't want to codify an ordinance that we shouldn't ever, or that.
And that's, so let's, maybe we stop for a second and open it up to staff. Have you got?
Staff is like, what are they saying?
So the event use story has changed a lot over the years. The special events category came up originally during the two thousand, early two thousands rural area comp plan. And originally, it was proposed as, hey, let's allow one more commercial use in the rural areas, which is events at historic sites, because historic sites are really expensive to maintain, right? So they need income to pay for maintenance. And everyone would have thought it was a great idea. In fact, it seemed like such a great idea that now, as Karen pointed out, it's a use that's permitted by special use permit up to two hundred people, I believe, and up to ten times a year, or possibly more.
That's a lot.
On any rural area property for any reason. But at that time, that's all there was. That and the temporary rural area events like horse shows, which is just a different thing. Since that time, the state enabling legislation has changed dramatically for other kinds of events. So brewery, distillery, and winery events are an aspect of agriculture under the state law. And so our local zoning ordinance permits those kinds of event uses up to certain sizes by right, and then by special use permit. And then we also added agricultural events. So any farm operation, whether they're growing apples or pumpkins or cattle, I don't know if you have a cattle event, but, and, and they can have events, again, up to a certain size by right.
What was the last?
Just farm events, agriculture.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Come pick your pumpkin day.
Yeah.
So since the early two thousands, we've gotten very specific regulations about the kinds of uses that actively support a rural use, whether it's growing grapes and just, and distilling them into wine, or growing cattle or pumpkins or whatever it is. But we still have this leftover of the special events, which is very vague. And it's just a special use permit for events. And there's no tie to historic preservation, there's no tie to agriculture, it's just a use.
Problem. Yeah, like is a wedding tied to agriculture if they're not eating the product of the farm or drinking the product of the farm, right? It's not.
It's just an event use. And we've had, I don't know, ten or so applications, some have been approved, some have not. But for most of them, there was no particular tie to any rural activity or conservation value. It was just some events.
Yeah.
About ten, ten applications over what time period?
Fifteen, twenty years. Yeah.
There's been others that have not come forward because of the neighbors' objections.
Oh, yeah.
And you might find that relaxing from your side, but I don't find it relaxing to receive hundreds of angry emails about how is the county letting this happen? The county's not letting it happen. This is somebody, a landowner's decided they would like to take their horse stables and make it a wedding venue, and everyone's in an uproar. In, in other words, oh, the whole uproar never had to happen.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like they're not applying for special event permits.
They are. That's what, no, they haven't done it. They're, just the act of saying, I'm thinking I'd like to do this. I'll have a community meeting. I'll meet with staff. We'll, we'll put it on the, and, and over that year and a half, two, three-year period, you got a lot of angry people getting themselves all twisted up until the person either does decide to go forward or not. So he's talking about things that have come all the way.
I see.
I'm telling you, there are more things that are bubbling around, and we've become one of the top wedding destinations. Like, I, there was, when we were talking about the regulations earlier, some folks who do weddings came and said, you know, we're out competing, going to England for your dream wedding and whatever.
Yeah.
So, so I'm, I'm all for weddings, but I want to be clear, just not, the, the whole event thing is really too loosey-goosey in our county right now. And as it gets more popular, like, you might see a lot more of these things coming.
So I guess, Scott, if I'm understanding what you're saying, this, it, let's just say that I'm a, a landowner and I have a venue, and it's not historic or landmark property. But I want to have a special event. Can I? If this.
Only by special use permit.
By, so I can still do that by special use permit, even if this is written into the comprehensive plan?
Uh, well, at the moment, because that's what the zoning ordinance says.
At the moment.
Right now, you can.
But if we, if we add this in there, if this becomes.
If, if this stays in the plan and we act on it, then the wording of the zoning ordinance would change. And then at that point, new applications from that point out would be limited to certain kinds of properties.
And registered historic properties, I hate to pick. And registered historic properties, I hate to keep picking on four point five, but registered historic properties, is that registered with the DHR? Is that a? What do you mean by registered?
Believe we meant national register.
And so that's, that is a landowner's prerogative. They don't have to register.
It's, it's a voluntary thing to apply to register and then the, the appropriate agency has to accept it.
And then there, if you say certain things to it, it can be taken off the national registry or whatever.
Went beyond my.
Yeah, it's just, I don't know if we, we're not going to have an answer to four point five tonight, but it's just something to keep an eye on.
We can, we can look into that more detailed or follow up on those questions.
Sorry.
We can try to follow up more on those, those questions about exactly how it works.
Thank you. Um, all right. Any other items on the bullet number three? Additional considerations?
Uses? Well, I guess, I, I, since I'm in the third rail mood tonight, I'll also, I was thinking about pe- people's needs in the rural area who are engaged in agriculture. And so one use I thought of, which would still have to be SUP, it would still have to be appropriate in the spot, but small engine repair. If I have to get my tractor fixed or my generators out, it, it is really hard to find a place to have that done. And that is something that comes up frequently. So.
Yeah, I had the same, I had the same, not, I didn't say it wasn't that specific, but that same idea of vehicle maintenance or something that would be a.
Yeah, I was thinking specifically like your tractor broke, your, your, your dump truck broke, you know, some, I don't know.
Specific, yeah.
Something along those lines where you need to get your equipment repaired.
The other thing was looking at crossroads communities that we have now, for example, crossroads and thinking about what uses are there, you know, health-related, restaurant, fire station, community center, things like that, which I think you have. Someone else have a comment?
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, I would say that, you know, of course, you know, the, the, the crossroads, you know, there we have Dr. Hose and all that. I mean, I think that obviously that was sort of a legacy zoning there.
Right.
And, and I'm not sure that I would necessarily want, um, you know, you actually have to, that place had to have a considerable amount of parking. You have to have, you know, it's, it's a pretty intensive use actually, but I, I wouldn't say get rid of that. It's a great, it's a great feature. I don't know that I would want a whole lot more of something at that level.
No, I agree.
Probably would need more bounding on, you know, it's maybe design criteria, scale, or some more additional standards that you could use to evaluate. You know, so to your point, that it wouldn't be quite so.
Correct. I think, I think you definitely need to take in scale into account. I think, I think the word restaurant would be problematic. Um, I think, you know, you have situations like you have the, the Batesville store, for example, does have food. You have small scale, you know, country stores and markets that do functionally serve it as restaurants in some ways.
Yeah, they have seating there, but they don't have a lot of seating. So you probably could write a code that's like, you know, you can't have a, a 40 table restaurant, you know, with a sea of parking, but you could have a small boutique eatery with, you know, no more than eight tables or something like that. You could, you could probably write, you could codify it.
And yeah, yeah, we're in, I mean, thinking we're still flying at 30,000 feet, right? Comp plan related things that in an appropriate location at an appropriate scale that would be figured out.
In the zoning.
The zoning process, it would be appropriate.
And I think, I think it's also, you know, just important to keep in mind with everything that I think it, it all has to, I think should all go back to the rural area plan. Not every use is appropriate in all areas and it's, it's mentioned there, you know, so you need to think about that. I would say, um, and action four, two, it, you know, we're, and that was brought up by staff, the update regulations to allow rural light industrial and commercial uses that support local processing and retail sales on properties with agriculture and silicultural uses. Um, that, that language is concerning to me, the way it's phrased. As a, as I pointed out, I think we need something more than just saying, okay, well, here's an area. Here's, and, and I understood what was intended there. I agree with the intent of, of saying, let's identify things that we're now calling light industrial, but that are really agricultural and, and find ways to permit those i- in the right places. I agree with that. But I think we also need to reconsider um, that classification itself. Um, that some of the things that we're calling industrial or light industrial, maybe we need a new classification for some of those things, um, that is more narrow.
Small scale support facilities for something, something. Like you could fit, you could fit in just this space of this dais floor space, a commercial kitchen that could be servicing people who would, you know, sign up to use it. And like I said, jam, jam their jams, jar their jams, whatever. And it wouldn't be a big footprint. And it would be, you know, people showing up for just that, the day they were going to do their vinegar or whatever. And it, and it's small and it's, you know, pretty unobtrusive, but it, it would support small scale agriculture in the rural area.
Yeah. And, and I think, you know, you know, in addition to one of those considerations too, I mean, I think a big, I think sort of your, part of your litmus test, your performance criteria for those sorts of things, water usage obviously has to be a big con- consideration. Um, septic, this is going to require a huge amount of septic. Um, and then also parking. If, if this is going to require a large parking lot, it's not appropriate for the rural area. So I think.
The visitation level, et cetera.
Access.
Yeah.
VDOT approval.
Right.
All those, which all come later. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, and you know, so.
Okay. So that, um, I don't want to cut you off.
Oh, yeah. I do have, I do have one other one down below too. Um, and this, I think we're, sorry to interrupt, but I, I think we're in sort of anything missing from the actions, right? We've sort of segued into the last question. Okay.
I have a question. I don't know the answer. So we, I've made, I've mentioned this scenario before where we have um, churches, old churches in the rural area where they were built so long ago, like when you would ride your horse or your donkey to church, you know, so there's, they lack parking. They aren't, you can't make parking, so they can't be reopened as a church. And they're sitting empty and the, you know, and we talked about resilience hubs and all that and using, you know, like in Batesville, there was a church building available, but um, I'm thinking of specifically places where we just can't reopen it as a church, but is there some way for some of these buildings that are historic to allow like some, I don't know if this would be possible somehow in our zoning ordinance, but you know, the neighborhood wanted to use it, they could rehab it as a little community center, but they're all going to walk to it. I can think of some specific buildings right now. So, but right now we, we're just, they're just rotting because we can't do anything with them because we have no parking. But we could probably get them really well-used with riding your bike to it or walking to it. And so you know, what, what could, it could, you know, could that be a little mini yoga studio, but it's only pedestrian. I, we're not going to put a bus stop there. Okay. It's like, these are far flung places. But is, could we come up with some kind of solution for those kind of spaces?
That's like the argument for the, the resilience hubs.
Yeah, right. Well, you know, we talked about waving.
But these are for places that are not like a resilience hub of Admiral County. I'm talking, you know, but they are, there are church buildings or other, it could be an old schoolhouse that, you know, kids used to walk to school or ride their donkey or whatever that, you know, now there's no parking there, but we can't, so the building just rots. So I'm just trying to think of ways that we could facilitate adaptive reuse of some of our historic structures by not making everyone have to park and drive there. Um, because of, because they're sunk right now.
Part of talks in the growth area about reducing parking requirements. And I think maybe just talking about reducing parking requirements altogether. I mean, I think it, the same concept applies in the rural area. If, if the parking is not needed.
Right. Like if, if there's little communities like Batesville, like Carringtonville, where there's a lot of people who walk. So that, that they could have that ability. Are you saying it's in there already, Fred?
Yeah. Seven point two, provide spaces in existing structures and public facilities in rural communities for small scale uses serving surrounding community members where proposed expansion of these structures includes community input on possible new structures and uses. So it's.
Right. And that's totally cool. But right now you wouldn't be allowed to do it in these buildings I'm thinking of because there's no parking, because our parking thing kicks in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It still kicks in. You're like, where's the parking lot?
Yeah.
And now we have to pave the rural area for something that a lot of people would walk to and three people would drive to.
The pro seven point two, including a, a addition.
Yeah, some other, some other ways that we can. If we, if we have a place that we know people can walk to, the walk radius is one mile, there's X number of people, they've said they want to use it. Can't we do something about these structures?
We have eight minutes left. We have two minutes each to go through. Is there anything missing from the actions?
Everything I thought was missing, I found in the stewardship chapter. Was glad to have that in advance.
Yeah, the great comments.
I, I will say, um, action seven point five. Um, I think it would be nice if that was a little bit more specific. Um, and maybe, and, and you're right, I should check the stewardship chap- chapter, make sure it's not in there. Um, but, but we should specifically, we shouldn't allow for, so for areas that from mining in Almar County, there, it's one of the few cases we have a different color. Um, we do have the natural resource extraction layer. And I would say that something should not be included, the natural resource extraction layer, if it has important ecosystems, um, historic resources.
Good point.
Or, you know, you know.
What about existing housing on top? We ran into this with the area on the very southwestern part of Almar County that butts Skylar. Where, and we wrestled with this in the, in the last round of the comp plan where they were going to put a, you know, resource extraction overlay there. But people, what they had done is say grandpa had sold the mineral rights under the house. The, so you could quarry or dig under their homes. But the current resident didn't realize that they didn't own the mineral rights under their houses anymore. And so this was, this is a, a potential to have a major conflict with people who did not want extraction going on underground underneath their structures. And they didn't realize that their grandpa or whoever had sold those mineral rights away, say in 1920 or something. So we have situations like that in the county. People don't even realize. So I, you know, why, why make it more of a problem by putting, saying it's a resource extraction area?
Yeah, I mean.
Unless, you know, it's free and clear, no one's houses on it.
Correct. I mean, I think there were areas where, you know, once again, it's everything's a different place. I don't need to go into that as seven piece. Um, I will say, go back to the um, where we have the, our discussions about the interchanges. Um, I think the same things there were talking about recently about the light industrial and just just, and the uses in those places, um, where, you know, legacy commercial areas. I think that the question is not for me. How can we, um, how can we permit, permit just things in those areas? It's more about how can we be more specific about what's already permitted? How can we, you know, you know, where we have areas that we're calling industrial that are actually something more narrow? Maybe we should call them something more narrow. Before we end up with a thing that we really don't want.
Right. Like it's a quarry or it's a, it's a sawmill, but that's, but we don't really want all the other things in that category to be able to go up. Is that what you're saying? Yeah. Would be tightened.
Christian, more anything? Missing?
Uh, no, not missing. I think I just, um, um, I kind of alluded to it with some of my questions before. I do, I do think we should look at the costs and benefits of things like revising and restoring the ACE ordinance. The ACE ordinance, the ACE, yeah, conservation easements ordinance. Before we just say willy nilly, yeah, we're going to get back into that. I mean, I don't know the costs and benefits yet. Um, I mean, I, I've seen some things written. I've, I've heard rough estimates of how much it costs us and then maybe some shadow ways that save certain things. But I think, you know, that would um, be worth actually having a more thorough conversation about like, you know, is that worth it? Rather than, I'm, I'm not ready to have that as three point one.
All right. Um, I just have a couple and then I'll just, before I say mine, because I want to make sure staff has time. Is there anything we haven't covered that you want us to touch on?
Oh, I think you all covered it very well. Thank you.
Okay. I just had a couple of thoughts. One, I know there's been some, and I don't fully understand a lot of the, some of this stuff. So biosolids. I don't know if that's something that we would want to get a specific of talking about that.
Well, as I've indicated previously, biosolids is largely precluded or preempted by state law. So there's a very limited, there is a role potentially for county monitoring of state regulation, but the regulations themselves are set by the state.
Great. Thank you.
I did have a meeting with some citizens recently about this issue who provided much more detail about it and, and also what some of the other localities are doing in this regard. And, and I do think there could be um, value in a monitoring program. I think the appropriate chapter for that would be the environmental stewardship, stewardship chapter. So maybe we could have a, a discussion about that in that, in that chapter.
That's good. On one point two, it says develop location standards for renewable energy projects in rural area that make those projects possible while protecting forests and other important landscapes. Again, I don't know how much detail we want to have in there, but I know people have talked about historic considerations, view sheds, things like that as well. So if we're going to list important landscapes such as, I don't know if we wanted to add that level of detail.
Well, and, well, can I just tag on it real quick? Among those lines, we do have the, the biodiversity action plan. So that would be a place to say, you know, those are the landscapes we've already prioritized as important and sensitive ecologically. So, you know, just forest is a little too broad.
Yep. Objective, uh, three point five. I guess our action three point five. Um, support partner organizations who are operating conservation easement programs in the county. I guess, I just, when I see that, I wonder, how do we get some action on that? Like, how do we?
Are we supporting them?
How, how are we supporting them? And yeah.
So the way, the way we mostly support them at the moment is through information sharing.
What sharing?
Information sharing.
Information. Okay.
The, the advantage we have as uh, an organization that includes both conservation programs and development permitting is that we know whenever a building permit or a subdivision application or other event center permit comes in on a property that's protected in an ag four district or under a conservation easement. It's a lot harder for uh, the outside nonprofits and state agencies to keep on, on top of those, that constant flow of applications. So we share information with them, just as we have an automated system to say, wait a minute, hey, Scott and James, look, there's this permit you need to look at. We share that with the other holders. So that they can get on top of a potential enforcement situation and have a talk with the landowner to work things out before it gets anywhere near being a physical violation.
Thank you. Um, touched on the special events. Um, the four point three, increase opportunities for buy right farm worker housing. Again, I think, I, I wrote down scale, definition, things like that. I guess that comes later, right? As we think.
Unless you want to just write appropriately scaled so that you
Could do that.
Make a notion that not just generally.
Yeah.
But that you would like, and then that in the zoning code would then address what is appropriate scale.
This is another one of those matters where things have changed over the years. Twenty some years ago, we adopted a regulation in the county to permit farm worker housing in a form that's not, that's clearly not a dwelling. So it's not, not, not a full dwelling. So you've got structures that are bunk houses and maybe a separate kitchen house. So that it, it functions for farm worker housing, which is often seasonal. But it can't easily slide into being.
Could just turn into a little mini subdivision, right?
And part of what's happened is state regulations and dice, design standards have moved along quite a bit. And so we're still requiring a special use permit for something that's directly supportive of agriculture, which is something we're trying to slide away from and get to more, making more ag supporting uses by right. And at the same time, the state has design standards that differ from ours. For example, ours require some element that it makes it a dwelling, whether it's a kitchen or whatever, to be in a separate structure. So that can't legally be used as a dwelling uh, full, full-time year round. And that doesn't really fit with the state standards anymore. And so we create a difficulty for local farm operations trying to meet the state standards in ours at the same time. So making it by right makes it more appropriate and supportive for agriculture and adjusting our standards to follow the state to some degree makes it less of a, of a catch 22 situation with the people who are trying to build these things.
Well, I guess, can I just, on briefly on that topic though, um, you would still want to do something like a zoning clearance, like what you do for B and Bs, because, or from Airbnb type stays, home stays, because they could have that dormitory on their farm, but where they place it might make a huge difference as to whether they're annoying the neighbors or whether it's tucked away. And so everyone's out barbecuing and it's not bothering everybody. I just, yeah, I wouldn't want it to just be like buy right anywhere on the farm property.
Yeah.
With the zoning clearance where you guys looked at parking and where they located it and avoiding sensitive areas and.
Right. And that would be consistent with the way we've done.
Right.
Ag, uh, ag event uses, for example, and a lot of those things are rural areas that are by right with a clearance, like you say, and standards, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, my last comment is uh, action seven point three and action seven point.
Uh, my last comment is uh, action seven point three and action seven point six, which maybe gets a little bit what you were saying, which it, I don't, I mean, I, this is, I'm sure it's, it's fine, just seven point three seems like it's part of seven point six. And maybe it's not, maybe they're independent and they're supposed to be for some, a good reason, but I'm just thinking from the standpoint of efficiency, if we if that's could be combined or if it's helpful. All right, we are out of time for the work session. Thank you, staff. Great job, everybody who's been part of that. And um, I will put us into recess until public hearing at six P M. Thank you. Running list. Thank you.
All right, you're now live.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the planning commission for December tenth, twenty twenty-four. I will call us uh, back into order and establish a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
We have Mr. Bibbins, Mr. Karazana and Mr. Claiborne Anderson tonight.
Thank you. And I'll read one more time. The public can access and participate in the hybrid meeting through information posted on the Almaral County website, specifically on the planning commission homepage and the Almaral County calendar. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for public comment on specific agenda items where input is invited. Um, with that, I'll move on to public comment on matters pending before the commission, but not listed for a public hearing on this agenda. I have one person on the signup list. We'll start with that. It is Mr. Williamson.
Good evening.
Evening.
Neil Williamson with the Free Enterprise Forum. In what has become somewhat of a holiday tradition, the Free Enterprise Forum annually presents an adapted hollow way uh, holiday poem or carol to the Almar County Planning Commission as a gift. Previous iterations have included Rudolph the Form-Based Code, Rio the Small Plan, uh, coronavirus carol, and the original, an Almar planning Christmas. With apologies to Christina Rossetti, tonight we present in the bleak midcomp plan. In the bleak midcomp plan, ten chamber chapters made me moan. Existing density stood hard as iron, frozen like a stone. Public comment had fallen, row on row, row on row. In the bleak midcomp plan, not so long ago. Housing needs, the map does not answer, nor affordability sustain. Middle-class families shall flee away when the map comes to rain. In the bleak midcomp plan, bold action was required. Politically challenging, action must be inspired. Enough of the NIMBY reactions, worship night and day. A few new colors on the map could give folks homes to stay. Enough for teachers, firefighters and police who make our committee, community thrive. The waiters and the clerks to live among us rather than drive. Houses and townhouses may have gathered there, two over ones and ADUs the neighborhood could share. But only the comp plan map in its binary rural development divide prevented such density with a simple PowerPoint slide. Development area expansion may not solve all woes. Creating multi-layered lasagna, let's see how that goes. How can we fix it halfway through this flap? If I were a cartographer, I would bring a new map. If I were a wise man, I would do a new density chart. Yet how can we fix it? Show a little heart. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Thank you, sir. You may have missed your calling. Is there any other uh, comment from the audience on items not on the agenda? Okay, is there anybody online?
No, sir.
Great, thank you. All right, um, with that, I'll move on to the consent agenda and ask if there is a motion to approve the consent agenda or anybody would like to pull that.
So moved.
A motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion? All right, we have the roll, please.
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move into the public hearings, item six. And this is the first public hearing ZMA twenty twenty-three dash seventeen and S P twenty twenty-three dash twenty. Chestnut Grove Manufactured Home Park Community, and I'll call for the staff report.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Missile and members of the planning commission. My name is Kevin McDermott. I'm the Deputy Director of Planning for Almar County. Tonight I'll be giving staff's presentation for the Chestnut Grove Manufactured Home Park rezoning and special use permit with the special exceptions. Uh, first I will uh, identify this, this property is located in southern Almar County. Uh, you can see that on the map here, way down in the far south end. Uh, about fifteen minute drive from Scotts, ten to fifteen minute drive from Scottsville. Um, and uh, it's on the south side of Chestnut Grove Road, approximately one mile west of the Chestnut Grove Road, James River Road intersection, you can see right here. Um, the existing conditions of the site, uh, the property is just over fifty acres. It's heavily forested and there is a W P O buffer that you can see right here in areas of critical slopes uh, throughout the property. Uh, this uh, is an aerial view of the site. It's turned around. So we're sort of looking at it from, looking from the north to the south. The property is generally uh, right through here. Um, and this is Chestnut Grove Road. Uh, you can see the surrounding areas of a rural character with a variety of rural uses, including uh, low density, single-family residential, forests, open space and agricultural uses. The zoning uh, is rural area, which permits single-family homes at half acres, a half acre a unit and agriculture and farm wineries, country stores. And by special use permit would allow community centers, private schools and daycare facilities. Um, the rural area is the comprehensive plan designation. You can see that it uh, the purpose of that designation is to preserve and protect agricultural, forestal, open space and natural historic scenic resources with low-density residential. The applicant's proposal is to rezone the property from rural area to R four and request a special use permit to allow a manufactured home park. R four is the lowest density residential zoning that allows manufactured home parks with a special use permit. Um, the plan on the screen is the proposed concept plan. Uh, this line up here is Chestnut Grove Road. You can see it would be served by the fifty proposed mobile home or manufactured home units would be served by two entrances on Chestnut Grove Road. Uh, you can see they have identified some potential well locations, uh, potential drain fields. There is a primitive trail system that circles around the property. And um, there you can see it mostly generally tends to avoid the uh, W P O buffer, although it does uh, W P O buffer does um, come into the area of lot development right here, which we've acknowledged. Um, and uh, there is proposal for onsite well and septic system that would need to get an approval from the board. And uh, the gross density overall is one dwelling unit per acre. Uh, there are, there is a draft proffer sheet and the applicant has volunteered proffers that restrict the uses and density of the property and to provide affordability. The proffers also address staff concerns with the special use permit and no can, no additional conditions are recommended as part of that special use permit. Uh, the volunteer proffers include restricting the permitted uses, uh, removing some of those in the typically allowed by right and R four that wouldn't be appropriate in this area, such as a higher density residential. And then um, the ones allowed by special use, it removes the assisted living facilities, hospitals and standalone parking. You can see the uh, other uses that are available in the um, attachment of the draft proffer statement. It also restricts the density. If they construct the manufactured homes, it allows a maximum of fifty manufactured homes. And if those manufactured homes are not built under the, even under the R four proposal, um, it's a maximum of six units, uh, which is what was allowed by right on these fifty acres. Uh, the affordability proffers um, include that thirty-three percent of the affordable land lease units will be at fifty percent um, of the uh, medium, area median income. The remainder of the land uses will be, will be land lease units at one hundred percent area median income. Uh, the units not land leased will be affordable rental units. It's sixty percent A M I. Uh, the applicant has requested some special exceptions to modify or waive the regulations related to manufactured home parks. Uh, we as staff have not fully evaluated all those special exceptions because we are recommending denial of the rezoning and special use permit. If the planning commission does decide to vote to approve the rezoning, um, the, any comments that you have on the special exception requests will be included in the staff analysis and presented to the board. The list of special exceptions can be paid, found on pages twelve and thirteen of the staff report. Uh, the staff concerns on the rezoning and special use permit uh, include that the proposal is inconsistent with the rural area goals and objectives and strategies found in the comprehensive plan. Proposals inconsistent with the county's growth management plan because it proposes residential densities above that recommended in the rural area. Um, the staff believes there are inadequate services and facilities and infrastructure to support the development in this proposed location. And that was pri- that's primarily because of how far away it is from any uh, any services that um, that the residents might need, including fire and rescue services, schools and other daily needs. Uh, I will point out that there was a typo related to this number three on page eleven of the staff report under the assessment of the special use permit. Um, it should be noted that we believe that fire and rescue and police services for the existing community members are also impacted by the additional residential density because this new development would further strain those existing resources that was cut off in the staff report. Um, additionally, there's inadequate information to determine whether the pros proposal can be supported by the central water and sewer service facility. Um, the Virginia Department of Health has not received enough information to review the proposed wells, soils and drain field locations. Uh, and also the stream buffer has not been field surveyed. And so there is potential conflicts existing with some of the home sites. Uh, the county code provides that the buffer shall be incorporated into the design of the development by keeping stream buffers in open or natural spaces and out of residential lots or areas of act, active use to the fullest extent possible. Uh, the positives that staff identified relate to the affordability that we discussed. That does provide an option for affordability that is not typically available uh, in Almar County and helps to address our affordability concerns. As I said, staff is recommending that uh, the denial of the rezoning, ZMA twenty twenty-three seventeen and also recommending denial of the special use permit for Chestnut Grove. With that, I'll take any questions.
Great, thanks, Mr. McDermott. Any questions from commission? Murray?
Yeah, I was, I'm good.
You just looked like you were ready to ask.
Yeah.
Now, Christian Moore? Okay. Thank you. No questions from us. All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant. And just as a reminder, you'll have ten minutes. Um, we may allow a little bit of a buffer on the end, depending on how the progress is taken, and then we'll open it up for comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Justin Schimpf, Schimp Engineering, engineer of this project. Paulina from my office has joined me, and then also Jason Moss is sitting behind me. He would be the primary owner and operator and construct, build the mobile home park. I am an investor in this also. Location we've talked about is a lot to cover, so I'm gonna go through these kind of quickly and get to the meat of it. The site is interesting in that there's not much around it. There's a lot of forest around it. It's a very typical rural kind of location. And critically for this sort of development, the land is rolling, it's fairly level. And there's adequate soils for drain fields. Those are all things necessary to make one of these work. That was part of our site selection criteria. What is this really, though? It's a community, it's fifty units, it's a hundred and twenty residents who have the ability to live in a place for a long time. They have the ability to have their own yard, to accommodate things they like, sheds, boats, et cetera. And it's a place where folks save a lot of money versus renting and also living in kind of a more rural lifestyle they want. You don't have the affordable rentals out in the rural area of the county. They don't get built, they can't get built. We're going through this process to try to do it. This is better than a rental because the cost is less, which I'll get into. Of it, we have fifty point six acres, seventy-two percent of the property is open space, not to be developed with this application. Our density is about one unit per acre, which is about twice what the sort of rural area density typically is. But it's important to note that these are about, these are small units, maybe a third of the size of the average house to build today in the rural area. And all the units are, as you heard, income restricted. Where we lease thirty-three percent, one-third to folks making fifty percent or less area median income. The balance are split between the park may own some units themselves, which they'd rent at the sixty percent A M I rent levels established at the county. And the remaining would be the land lease, so you land yourself and have your own home on it, to folks making it less than a hundred percent of area median income. And all this is done without any sort of government subsidy, because we're able to use land well suited for this kind of development without having to have an additional subsidy to meet the affordability we're seeking. Zoning in Almar and everywhere has been around a long time, and I think it's largely well-intentioned. I think that I've been here with my uh, friend Vito Chetam many times. He talked about how good the Almar County Comprehensive Plan is, and I think it has been very good. If you look at the communities created over the past forty years here, it's really, it's nice. These are high-quality communities, uh, well-designed, and that's been implemented by, with the help of the county. But the county has almost doubled in size and since nineteen seventy, the five percent growth area was established. And we are seeing a squeeze now where I'm in the business of this. You can't find a place to build a single-family house hardly in Almar. And if you do, it's going to be nine hundred thousand dollars for a new house. And that's just a reality of the scarce land. It's expensive to build on. The good land is already built on already. What's left in the five percent is difficult. And so that's why we're looking for alternatives to satisfy the need for some space for folks like they have a yard, like a single-family house, what they can afford. And that's what this project does. So a concept plan, I think I'm gonna skip through this a little bit to the next more detailed page, since you've seen this. There's just the open space overlay to give you an idea. So all that area, there are some trees are cleared for drain fields, but that remains essentially green space thereafter. You zoom in a little bit, you'll see we have street trees like a neighborhood. And then we have also, uh, you'll see these wooden buffers between us and Chestnut Grove Road. Um, it's not showing up right here, but there's a, another sheet shows the fifty, the buffer correctly. This is where the, the little conflict is, it's really a site plan issue we need to address with the house being too close to the stream buffer. But these lots are essentially the size of a Belmont lot in Charlottesville. Fifty by one twenty-ish, you've got a little side yard, you have a backyard. You could have um, a little fenced in area for a dog. You could actually have a dog in your home. It's not a rental, you own your home. You have flexibility to have an extra tool shed, or if you work in the, you know, landscape business, maybe you have a landscape trailer. Those are things that if you live in a apartment, that doesn't work for you. So that's why this kind of option for housing is very important. Traffic has been brought up as sort of a, a concern about this, and we talk about development, there's always the impacts and the impacts of traffic. And then through your sort of services, basically. This area is interesting. There hasn't been a whole lot of action out here in quite a long time. Here's the current traffic conditions around. You'll see that, for example, the main road there is Route Six, it's Irish Road, uh, which cuts over towards Scottsville. There's a thirteen hundred eighty T on that road right now. For comparison, some other rural area roads like uh, Union Mills or Buck Mountain are five, six thousand trips per day. Not that we want to get that kind of traffic anywhere else, but it's illustration of people are coming. Not that we want to get that kind of traffic anywhere else, but it's illustration of people are coming through Albemarle County on those roads, the rural areas to get into Charlottesville. So here that hasn't happened, or maybe it has happened out in the north of the county, Earl'sville area or Lake Monticello. The next page, this is two thousand and one traffic counts. And so you'll see, and these are a little confused lower, so what this means is that in two thousand and one, the traffic on Irish Road was five point eight percent lower. So that we've grown traffic five point eight percent in twenty-one years from twenty-one point two. So this is an area where unlike parts of the county where there has been development or through traffic, there really hasn't been a lot of traffic change. So this small amount of development in this area doesn't really push the traffic significantly. Now, would this area support ten of these? No. But one amounts to a very minimal change in traffic conditions. This is a graph you all have probably seen, but also drives it why this is important. This is from twenty twenty-two, the American survey, we use this census data. And it shows that the renters in Albemarle County, which there's a bunch, forty-four percent are cost burdened and they pay more than thirty percent of their income in rent. And that's a problem that's been getting worse, not getting better. Part of that is a lack of housing options for folks. Recently, and this is probably a low number, if you look on the Avon, kind of south of Charlottesville neighborhood, Avon Road, you can rent a two bedroom apartment for about nineteen thirty a month. That costs you twenty-three thousand dollars a year, which to afford that thirty percent threshold is a seventy-seven thousand dollar income and up. That's to be affordable to you. Prior housing studies, the county has identified that up to ten thousand people, households are severely, severely cost burdened, matching the other studies, other numbers we showed. Mobile home, the reason this is a good solution is if you lease the land and you buy your home, it significantly protects you from further cost of increase, house of housing increases. So here, for example, we have, if you rent the land, five hundred dollars a month for the lot, a hundred thousand dollar units of mortgage of eighty-six hundred bucks, repairs, taxes, you end up being seventeen thousand dollars a year versus renting of twenty-three thousand dollars a year, which is, you know, six thousand dollars. You might think, yes, if I live a little closer to town, that might offset some of that. But the cost of your home remains fixed over time. Whereas your historically rents here a three or four percent increase per year. And so at the end of thirty years, if you take a table, I can go to this if you all want to look into it later. The amount someone pays in the mobile home park buying their home over thirty years versus renting for thirty years is six hundred and twenty thousand dollars difference. And you take that over fifty units and that's thirty-one million dollars. So to get these folks and the cost of living to live in Chestnut Grove, in this little home park, to a two bedroom apartments they may not even want is a million dollars a year for this community. That's why this is an important housing type and something we need to try to find a way to make work. I'm gonna touch on a few of these. We're running a little, a little tight on time, but one of the things I want to bring up, there's analysis the staff has of the rural area priorities and there's certainly a historical precedent that precedent that any development in the rural area is simply a no-go, any sort of rezoning or whatnot. But this is interesting because one of the items is the middle there is be reversible. This project requires essentially no grading, no major construction. If in fifty years from now, the housing needs the community have changed, then they can revert back to forest. It's not, it's not so much infrastructure investment cannot revert. It's an important consideration, I think. Staff concerns, I would just point out a few of these items again. The growth management policy has established this, but I would ask you like, if we can't build the kind of community where people can afford to live and have a yard because of the growth management policy, is that a good thing? Should we consider changing that? Should we consider that? And then the issues with the site, the water and sewer and the stream buffer, those are kind of site plan issues. But I will say that the water and sewer in this case is a non-consumptive use. So folks are worried about use of water. Well, it's domestic, so you pull water out of the ground in a well, you put it into a drain field and it goes back in. If you're in the agriculture business, you water your crops, you water your cattle. That's water that comes out and doesn't come back. If you have a winery, that's water that comes out and doesn't go back. So those are things that are more damaging, I think, to the water. That is the end of this. I leave you with this chart because it's a reminder of what the project really is. And that we are trying to accommodate households who cannot afford a single family house in Albemarle County where they want to live and they like rural living. And this is a way to do it. It doesn't require the government to pitch in. We think it's a good project and we hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for moving through that so quickly. Appreciate all those comments. Any questions for the applicant from the commissioners? Murray?
Sure.
So how did you come up with the number fifty? I see that you have six. You know, if you, without this proposal, you could build six homes on the site. So how did you get to fifty from six?
It's a couple of things. One is the one unit per acre is a very comfortable margin source. Make sure you have your septic and well and not overtax the land, basically. There's also a number, you need to get to a number, something like that, to justify development versus simply putting six single family lots on there and moving on. That essentially becomes a higher and better use versus this quantity of affordable housing.
And this is a, this is a question for staff. So is, is rezoning the only way to accomplish this sort of thing or could this have also been done by special use permit? Is it the number of units require a rezoning?
A mobile home park, or I'm sorry, a mobile home park, as I said earlier, is only allowed by special use permit in R four or above districts.
Bar at R four. Thanks. Do you have a question? No, right now. Christian Moore?
I was curious, since you mentioned it, if in some future case this were built and then county or landowner did want to revert it back to a more rural area use. Take me through the steps of what that would look like, of how, how it could be undone in this, in the circumstance, in the scenario.
Sure. Well, what's, what's in the ground basically is water lines, sewer lines and electric, right? And so those can be abandoned, disconnected and left in place. You grade in a, a very basic road, but it's not like a mass grading required. It's the same thing you'd do if you were building a farm, essentially be a little wider where people drive on. And so, and you've seen this in places, look, mobile home parks have gone away. And generally it's because of, you know, an owner who didn't take care of something and had to, you know, close it down, basically, not for lack of demand. But let's say, for example, fifty years from now, where somehow we're living on Mars, it's very far out. But, and there's simply no need for this sort of housing type because we've come up with a better solution that society is happy with. Then simply put, people would just move out. They'd be like, hey, man, I don't need to live out here anymore. I'm gonna go live wherever and it's better for me. And as the park dwindles down, once you to a few people left, the owner will say, well, that was a good run. Now I'm gonna plant some pine trees here because that's now the highest and best use of my lane. And you would simply remove the homes. It's just dirt underneath them. You would cap the pipes off and you would plant some trees and they would grow and you would harvest them.
All right. Fire rock, any questions?
Yes, I have a few. So the, I can't remember the figure you had for the land lease per each unit per month. Was it five hundred?
Five hundred.
Okay. So then they, they, they buy the house. The, are, are you constructing these trailers and then they're purchasing them or are they bringing a mobile home and having it constructed? Tell me how the, the house.
Sure. The general setup is if this, this were approved, we would go to the Clayton Homes of the world. And people come to them all the time saying, hey, I want to buy this house. Do you have a place for me to put it? And they, there are a few parks that have expanded or have capacity in them. And so you go and pick your home you out, you want basically, and they'll, usually the home seller will connect you with the location. And then they'll say, oh yeah, call Mr. Moss up and you can sign a contract with him for five hundred dollars a month. And then the home is delivered and set up by the, usually by the provider, like Clayton Homes, for example. You could also, the one interesting advantage of this is that you can buy a, you know, a used home for thirty thousand dollars sometimes. It's very, you know, reasonable condition. So if you can, if you had thirty thousand dollars in capital, you can buy the home, move it there and then you're paying five hundred bucks a month. And so that's also for a lot of folks who don't have credit or things like that. That's another option is folks buy a second hand one and can move it. So you could do either. It could be a private market or through a kind of a new home dealer. And usually those folks will set it up. Mr. Moss is familiar with setting up homes. He would, he could move a home to the park for somebody if they wanted.
And, and what is the cost of a new home generally?
They range.
You know, seventy thousand, for example?
It, for the, for the, it used to be seventy thousand. For retail price now, they're getting up above a hundred. You can buy, if you go, if I go to a place and say, hey, I want to buy like five of my, my park, I can get them for like sixty or seventy piece. So they are available for under a hundred. Generally speaking, by the time you pay for the setup costs and things like that, you're gonna keep over a hundred these days. Five years ago was well less than that.
Okay. And then just quickly, you know, in, in reading up about some of, I, I, I am a fan of mobile home parks as a general affordability option. But in reading up on sort of how, we, we say that word, mobile home parks, but they're, in a sense, they're really not that mobile. Because once, you know, they're set on their foundation, you live in the, you know, after you're, you're in there for twenty years, your, the house is not really that easily transportable to, to be stable. And I guess I'm just curious about that. I mean, do you see someone living there for twenty years and then picking up their house and moving it to a different location or?
Well, I think often they, they can sell their home to someone who would come in, basically, right?
Probably so they would sell it. They wouldn't try to move their house.
Generally speaking, it's, it's easy, right? It depends where you're trying to move to. You can. I will say, like the ones, you know, we worked in the Crozee Mobile Home Park and we've ran across folks in there that had lived there for over forty years, like multi-generational. And, and mobile home, manufactured homes from the like fifties and sixties, who are not great quality then. The new homes you build, you buy are a pretty high standard. They have two by six walls. I suspect those would survive twenty or thirty years and be able to move easily. Older ones would not. But basically you buy your home and let's say you, you paid off the mortgage for thirty years and it still has life in it. You can sell it for twenty thousand dollars, somebody and they'll pay you twenty thousand dollars. They move into your home and live in the park.
Okay, one, one other question, different topic. You talked about, you know, people being able to say like they had a lawn care business, they're able to store their equipment or whatever. But I, I, maybe I didn't understand what I read in the application. You're not providing additional storage areas. You're talking about if somebody had a lot and their mobile home and they constructed a shed on their property. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Cause I thought in your application, you are not providing external storage area.
We, no, we're not. You, but you would have the right to basically put a, a trailer, landscape trailer, something like that on your lot. You have enough room.
You'd have enough room to put up a shed that you could put your, your trailer, your riding mower, your, whatever your business is.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, go for it.
Sorry, I should have asked when I had the floor before, but with the water piece, I know the county staff didn't do an analysis, particularly deep analysis of water, but tell me more about the, the water table there, what you know about the water availability. I know there was some concern about just fifty units is a fair number compared to the density around there.
So I don't think I brought the numbers with me. We did a FOIA, before we even bought the property, the FOIA request of the health department got all the well records from the immediate area. Cause there are some areas that aren't great around there, but they're quite good, actually. There was a number of twenty, thirty gallon, seven gallon a minute wells in that vicinity. And so that gave us enough confidence to perceive with the purchase of the property. How you perceive with this is you hire a geologist to do a, a study where they lay out electrical wires in the ground. And then you can sort of spot the prime water locations and you go and drill your wells. And you're required to have a half gallon per minute per unit. So during the site plan phase, I, we would not, we would have to drill the wells and get them permitted as part of the site plan process. So the health department would basically spend the money, drill the wells. And then, and for some reason we were short of water, we might have to be short of units or we might not be to build it. But nothing in the data we've seen challenges us on that. Like I say, the, the use is by definition, it's like the USGS definitions, it is non-consumptive. We are not taking water from the ground and dispersing it somewhere else. It's returning to the source, essentially.
Great. I have a few questions and I'm gonna take advantage of your actual professional as well because I know a lot of this is engineering speak, but I had the same question about the watershed. So that, just to follow up on that, I guess there's also concern, I think that, let's just say there is capacity there. The amount of dwelling units, the fifty dwelling units, how many gallons per day are you thinking they're gonna be pulling on average from the source?
A new unit would probably use around a hundred to a hundred and twenty gallons a day. So that's five to six, let me call it seven thousand gallons in total.
Per day?
Per day.
Okay. And you mentioned the seventy-five or seventy-eight percent, somewhere there about seventy-four percent, seventy-two percent is gonna remain as open space. And you also mentioned that that doesn't include the areas that are your septic fields, your wells, your utilities, things like that, that they would require clearing. Can you give us a sense of what percentage of the parcel, if you take into consideration drain fields, ponds for dry hydrants, well locations, for water management roughly would be cleared?
Think our number, if I had it, it's like fourteen acres. Let me go back to the picture here.
Four.
Yeah. So everything, the green represents less the fourteen point some acres, right? So we have some drain fields, the ponds. You probably have another four or five acres of clearing that is still open space, but is impacted by this, if that makes sense. So maybe it's twenty acres in total is disturbed in some fashion. But five acres of that is converted back to a pond. And basically the drain field is simply a grass lawn where something can run over and toss a frisbee on or something like that. That's, it would, would seem like if you were a resident there.
So looking at this is helpful. So I'm not gonna second guess your numbers. It just looked like more to me than that, but I know you're dealing with slopes. I see critical slopes. I guess those are the shaded areas. And then I see it looks like your, your drain field, the code of the, I guess the key for the drain field is that darker green. So you have three?
That's right.
And you have a drain field that's on some pretty significant slopes where it says force main. Did you put those drain fields on there based on what you would expect topography would be needed, that would need to support this?
They are. Those, actually, we have soil test in all those locations from a soil scientist to laid out the area with those.
Got it. Shifting over to traffic, vehicle trips per day generated by these?
I think it was three hundred and fifty-six trips.
Three hundred and fifty-six. Okay. Daily trips.
Daily trips.
So what are you applying as a, as a number for each unit?
Uh, so that ends up being something like seven, about seven trips.
About ten trips per day?
Correct. No, smaller. These are, these are much smaller households and, and you'll take, you'll see often, you know, older folks who are living on like a fixed income, this is a preferred housing type for them. They are not out traveling about. And you'll have some families here because it's affordable, but these are also generally all like two bedroom units. So you don't get very large families. It's, you'll have some.
Did you, maybe it's premature for you to have looked at, and I'm sorry if this is in the staff report, I missed it, but VDOT comments? Do you, did you get any comments from VDOT or any transportation feedback?
We did not get any comments from them except that they would need a, a land use permit for the entrances.
Okay. Thank you. And you weren't planning on any off-site improvements to transfer to roads?
No.
Visibility from the road, I guess it's, if you go back to that plan, so it's got a buffer, fifty foot setback?
Correct. And for some reason on this sheet, let me go to this sheet. Sorry. Yeah, there it shows it right. See the fifty foot landscape buffer? So on both sides of the entrance road is a fifty foot landscape buffer here and here. And so those are existing trees we can leave in place.
Got it. Okay. Okay. I think that's, those are all the questions I had. Thank you. So we'll open it up for comment and then you'll have a chance to come back and respond to any of the comments.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move into the comment phase and open it up to people who wish to speak on this matter. And I'll just say at the beginning, if you could, if you, if you agree with the speaker who has come up, raise your hand and you don't necessarily have to repeat what's already been said unless you feel like you do want, you want to, which is fine too. But I'm gonna go down the list. I have nine people on this list and then we'll go to online. And then we'll come back to the applicant for response. So we'll start and forgive me if I'm butchering any names here. It looks like Barbara Glow?
Sorry.
Or maybe Barbara G. Low. I'm second time. second time.
Oh, thank you to the to the commission.
Thank you. Yeah, that'd be great. Just state your name to the record and you'll have three minutes.
Barbara Low is my name. I live on the corner of James River Road and Chestnut Grove Road. I've owned that property since nineteen ninety-five. I am very aware of the changes in the community and the community. I've been an integral part of this uh Chestnut Grove community. Thank you to the staff for coming to the meetings. More than a hundred people came to the two community meetings that were there and everyone spoke in opposition. Just start there. Important is, I sat through your meeting at four o'clock because I was interested in where you're thinking about the community input themes rural area land use on AC on AC, what is it, AC forty-four? And not very much about this plan is consistent with what's in there or what we talked about at that meeting. In fact, at the meeting, I heard someone say, first, let me start with that meeting says, recommended land uses should be tailored to each community. There should be engagement with individual rural communities. And there was engagement and that this community has very specific facts and very specific concerns. And thank you that the in in their recommendation, they noted some of the things. One of the things that was mentioned and a very important thing is the traffic. And um, when the engineer was talking, he talked about Route Six. This this isn't accessed by Route Six. The way you get there is you go down James River Road, you go down twenty from Charlottesville, then you turn on Langhorne, across six, down James River Road onto Chestnut Grove Road. James River Road is a very important inter- um integral artery between Buckingham, Nelson and it's the only way to get to twenty. And so there is a very large amount of traffic on there. I said at both meetings, please do a study. And there was never a study done. So I counted one day, twelve hours, eight hundred and fifty cars. Now, that's whatever, how many trips, I counted trips. I didn't count um, individual cars. And he wants three sixty-five more. That road has three one lane bridges, two places where it constricts down to two cars and many places where they're a very, very tight curves and everyone has discussed that and that was addressed. Note that and that's important. Um, and Chestnut Grove is really a one and a half lane road. It's really not a true one lane road at all. Second, um, emergency services. I know you're going to hear from other people, but if you came to the community meetings, you heard several people tell talk about this and we experienced this in our own family, fifty-two minutes for the ambulance. My mother-in-law had a coaster in her teeth while she was seizing. Not two months ago, we called the police because we had a break in around eleven, twelve o'clock at night. Took an hour and a half of them to get there and they cl- they said, we're sorry, we only run one person south of Wegmans because that's the way it's 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 termed. Now, that's that's just a fact. We don't mind that, but you can't increase the call on that when you have limited resources. The affordability is clearly the touted feature here. But I note that when they looked at the um
Sorry, if you could just wrap up your
Oh, sure. The figures, just, we called Clayton Homes. He calls the mortgage seven hundred dollars. It costs for the lowest model eighty thousand dollars. Then you have to pay seventy thousand dollars for them to bring it, set it up, um, and put it in and connect the HVAC and the um, trailer. My husband went acting like he was gonna buy one. He asked, um, how do you get financing? There's only two banks in Virginia that'll do it. You have to put down fifteen percent. So that's thirty thousand dollars to buy one and set it up. And then you pay personal property tax. You have to pay all these things. Please, that's not affordable. Finally, note the environmental impact. When you talk about the well, we don't even know that they'll be able to get the mile, the amount. What happens to Mr. Williams who's sitting here as well? What happens um to Mr. Gaines as well, who's sitting here? What happens to the other wells of the people in this community? Um, the Sheeler family who I saw back there? Their wells are getting drawn.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, those online, if you want to go ahead and use the raise and feature and we can get you in the queue, you'll be at the end of of everybody here in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next one is Kevin Bychen? Gosh. Even close. And good point, uh, Jennifer Gaines is on deck. So if you're ready, that'd be great. Thank you.
So I just wanted just to talk about the traffic issue um in the sense that I live on Chestnut Grove.
Alright, yeah, you need to state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is uh Kevin Fletcher and I live at uh seven eight one four Chestnut Grove Road.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, if you could start the timer, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So to talk about the traffic, um, like if you choose not to take the James River Road, you're going to take Chestnut Grove Road to six. And so the idea that uh there's just one hundred and fifty trips a day on that road, I I it there's a hundred and fifty in the morning because that's the shortest distance to get to six uh is going through Chestnut Grove Road. And even in his comments, he talks about going from Buckingham to Plank Road or from Plank Road to get from there, from there, you're gonna either have to drive through Esmont, which is twenty-five miles an hour. Or you're gonna have to drive through Porter's Road, which is very densely populated, thirty-five mile an hour uh traffic to get through there. So by adding all of this extra traffic through there is not is not feasible, really, to be honest with you, for the neighborhood. And secondly, the of course, the idea is that we must preserve our rural areas. And if you look at the uh conservation easement map for Southern Albemarle County, we're not talking about a thousand acres. We're talking about thousands of acres that have been set aside by citizens in that area. It's one of the largest contiguous uh conservation easements blocks in all of Albemarle County. So the private citizens are doing their part. And so the idea that the county would think would would go behind them and and thwart their efforts is not really a good idea to me. But like I say, it's thousands of acres that have been set aside. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Gaines and then David Roadcap, I think, is on deck. Feel free to come forward if you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Gaines and I live at ninety-two thirty-seven, which is the closest house across the street down around about a quarter mile away. So that speaks about our density. We have lived at our house since two thousand and seven. Um, and I am here to talk about our rescue response. We all know it's a problem and it's a problem when we chose our house. I've been a nurse for almost thirty years. I worked bedside at Martha Jefferson for twenty years and I teach at the School of Medicine and School of Nursing at UVA. I am calm in chaos of a medical emergency. I had a teenage nephew have a really bad asthma attack last summer. It took fifteen minutes for a volunteer fighter fighter who knew our name and address to show up with some oxygen. And then an additional thirty to forty-five minutes for the one ambulance to come out to our house. And he had an aunt who was skilled to calm him and to love him and a firefighter with resources. What happens to infants, to elderly when we have this kind of increase? There's a hundred and twenty people suspected for this at fifty houses, two parents, two kids. That's at least two hundred. That's who needs low income or affordable housing in our area. And if that's the case, that's more people than live on all of our six mile Chestnut Grove Road. So you're doubling our neighborhood in this one little area. We understand the rescue time. I am a hundred percent behind affordable housing. But not stressing our already stressed resources with doubling it and no access for these people. Thank you.
Thank you. David Roadcap and then it looks like Alan or Alex and I cannot read the last name.
Hi, uh, as you said, my name's David Roadcap and I uh own land along Chestnut Grove, in fact, directly opposite of where the development is is planned. I'm across the road from that. Um, and and I want to use my time here to sort of um state why I strongly oppose the development because it's completely runs counter to the county's development plan, both the current development plan and the draft version of AC forty-four that you were talking about earlier today. Um, you know, some core guiding principles in that development plan are directing growth development areas and maintaining the rural character of of the rural areas of the county. And there the the plan lays out for essential factors that need to be met when running counter to those core goals. And I I just want to run through a couple of those today. Uh, one factor is that uh any proposed development should be of a size and scale that complements the character of the area. And as as we as we've already heard today, you know, Jen was just saying it would essentially double the residents on Chestnut Grove Road. It's the it's for a density of housing that's seven times greater than what would be allowed under the uh division by right. Um, you know, it's essentially fifty homes crowded onto less than ten acres. That that's just not consistent with the surrounding area. Another factor um is that the uh development should be result in little discernible difference to the traffic pattern. We've already heard about this a little bit, so I won't go over it too much, but even by Mr. Shimp's numbers, that triples the amount of traffic on Chestnut Grove Road from about a hundred and fifty trips to over five hundred. That's triple the amount of risk of collisions on a twisting narrow road with little to no shoulders. That's triple the risk of head-on collisions in the nearby on nearby one lane bridges. And that's just not an acceptable risk to the residents of the region. Um, third factor, I wanted to talk about groundwater. Again, that's been covered a little bit today. Um, I don't know where Mr. Shimp is getting his data, but I I really disagree with it. The you hear stories from well drillers, from residents, from everyone about how hard it is to get adequate flow from wells in this region. And the five, seven thousand gallons a day number that is is terrifying. I I think that would drastically impact the ability of other residents to to get us adequate water around them uh in their homes. And i- is just uh, you know, should weigh heavily against this development. Um, now, there's a lot of other factors that that go into this analysis and I'm not going to go through all of them here, but the general theme is that the size and scale of this proposed development just make it fundamentally unsuited for the Chestnut Grove Road area. I couldn't think of a worse place to put a development like this in the county. Um, and uh, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Alan and then Isabel Zaluka is on deck.
Yeah, good evening.
Sorry, I can't read your last name.
Good evening. My name's Alan Hurden. Oh, I was able to buy a piece of property on Chestnut Grove between the Gaineses and Miss Lowe. And uh, I've been on that property up there around where he bought the property, Mr. Shimp bought. I've been there for thirty years hunting. I've been on every inch of that place. All the elevations there are way misproportionate for what he's telling you. Uh, it's very steep. The only part he's gonna use is out on the road and I'm a general contractor as well for forty years. And I cannot see how he wouldn't be tearing the trees all to pieces and the trailers will be sitting uh three block here, ten block on the other end to get them off of ground if you don't cut the ground down level. And speaking on the water there, we call that area Dry Creek. Uh, Dry Creek goes down with the Roadcap side of the road. I walked it all my lot, you know, for thirty years. The other side of the road is his place and it dries up every summer. Travis Hazel just done a house right up the road, right on the other side of uh Chestnut Grove Church. Three hundred and eighty feet. Three wells, Kennedy Feeny drilled them. He drills wells every day in Albemarle County. Could not find any water for that man right on the other side. In the land for what he's gonna use it for, I was raised in a trailer, so I'm fine with that. You know, if you want to get a trailer, I don't care, but that's not the place to put it. I mean, it's totally wrong. Uh, they show the roads coming in there, the road that's on the left-hand side. That's the flattest spot he's got and it falls off hard to the right the farther you go in there. The road that's flanking the road, his fifty-foot buffer is actually a power line right now. And it goes all the way in front of the property. And he's gonna have to tattle trees down on top of here to get all these trailers in there. It's as simple as that. And then the impact of the road, you know, I sit around up there for a long time, listening and hunting and you hear traffic coming in. Most times in the morning, I grant you. And everybody's exactly right. All your traffic is going back to James River Road for the majority of everybody. Anybody in Chestnut Grove Church goes to boat towards Route Six and anybody that's on uh Pocket Lane, they're doing the same thing. So thank you all for your help, but we don't want any of that up there.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, Isabel Zaluka and Adelaide O'Brien on deck?
Good evening. I'm Adelaide O'Brien. I live on Hatton Ferry Road. And tonight I want to address the misnomer that mobile homes are affordable housing. Mobile and manufactured homes can be affordable housing if the homeowner owns the land beneath the home. This proposal for Chestnut Grove is not affordable housing as the homeowner will not own the land that the mobile home sits on. Unless the mobile or manufactured home owner owns the land, then it is real property. They typically can only get a personal property loan for the mobile home, such as a car loan. And typically, they'll pay higher rates than for those who own the land and their mobile home. Mobile home parks are known as a predatory industry with minimal financial risk to the mobile park owner and serious financial risk to the mobile homeowner. Owning their home but not the land beneath it leads the mobile homeowner very vulnerable to rent spikes for the lot. Mobile homes depreciate over time versus the typical site-built homes and even manufactured homes. While these homes are mobile as they're brought onto a site from a place where they're manufactured, once they're in place, the cost to move them can be out of reach for most tenants. And I want to quote from a New York Times article titled Investors Are Buying Mobile Home Parks? Residents Are Paying The Price From March Of Two Thousand Twenty-Two. And I quote, "Industry leaders are blunt about the business model." According to materials for a boot camp for aspiring mobile home park investors prepared prepared by Mobile Home University, which is run by two of the largest mobile home park owners in the country, the fact that tenants can't afford the five thousand dollars it costs to move a mobile home keeps revenue stable and makes it easy to raise rents without losing any occupancy. I request that you please not consider the rezoning of this partial nor provide a special use permit as to do so would benefit only the property owners so that they can have a stable revenue stream at the expense of the mobile home buyers and at the expense of the community at large, which will need to pay for the additional infrastructure such as reopening Nancy's school, additional fire and rescue support, and they'll experience excessive traffic on our rural roads. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Adelaide O'Brien and Casey Chisholm is on deck.
My name's Isabel Zaluka.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got, I got, the race to the podium was uh, I got beat.
You did. Thank you.
Um, but I wanted to speak about the lack of the well water in the area. I recently bought the land, twenty-five acres, which actually was two parcels that I put together in keeping with the rural aspect of the area. Um, in the process of building, obviously, I had to get drill a well first for my permit. The first well uh exceeded four hundred feet and had no adequate water. I did drill another well, um, four hundred and fifty feet and let's just say it's adequate water, but not beyond that. Um, most likely, I'll be drilling another well if I ever build a residence. Right now, I'm just building a barn with an apartment. So um, you know, in dress, addressing the issue of uh water is, I think, a concern for everybody. And uh, the consumption on the scale that they're talking about is, you know, uh, beyond uh belief for this very rural area. And uh, I hope that the committee does address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Chisholm and Teresa Warren is on deck. Hello?
Um, I'm Casey Chisholm and I'm for it. Um, I don't live in the area yet. Um, but I just wanted to, I don't want to come up here and act like I know anything about the zoning or the well or anything, but I just want to state my opinions. Um, it sounds like a um established community that doesn't want change, which I totally understand. Coming where my parents live, we're fighting now to get a solar uh area not built near them. So totally get that. But coming from a single mom um, who with the, hold on, I wrote, hold on. A single mom with one kid in college. We are Penn State. Um, and then another one planning to go next year. And then I hear of a potential place to plant my feet and be able to afford it along with student loans gets me excited. Um, not not somewhere I would want to stay like forever, but to get my feet planted, to get my bearings, save money and all that. Um, and then I feel like with my girls, I feel like it would, I know there's affordable housing in Charlottesville with income restrictions, but as we all know, that's not the safest option. Um, but somewhere where they're already somewhat established in the Monticello High School District, if that's even what it is, or they would be, see, I don't even know. But anyways, I was But anyways, I was like, it, it would be safer. I would feel more comfortable for my kids to be there. Um, and then I hear like a lot of complaining. I'm a employee of a police department. So the problem isn't like the location. The whole county has that, has that problem. The problem is getting officers and other public employees to want to take the job. So, so that is, um, I think that's it.
Great. Good timing. Thank you very much. You too. Thanks. Teresa Warren?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Teresa Warren. I am actually also for it. I heard about the project through Casey. Um, I live in Scottsville. I live on the Fluviana side of Scottsville. Um, I was, when I was, I was married and I divorced and I had to find a place to live. And, um, I got lucky and found a place, but I would like to find a place of my own. And the option with this project gives single moms or, you know, new families the opportunity to start out in a place that's theirs. They may not stay there. They may move on just like anybody else, but it does give us the opportunity to have something that we can say is our own home. And it's not something that, you know, there's restrictions obviously with everything. And there would probably be just to keep the maintenance up and the beautification of the, the, the land itself. But just the fact of the matter that it is an opportunity for someone as a single mother who also has children in college to have that opportunity. It's, it's something to think about. That's it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? That's the end of my sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else in, uh, the audience who would like to speak to this issue? Who has not signed up?
Uh, good evening.
Evening.
Um, my name is Edward Brooks. I am the program manager for the BF Yancey School Community Center. And I'm a native of Esmond. I've lived there my whole life. And I went to Yancey School and very familiar with the Chestnut Grove area. Um, I just wanted to say that our emphasis there is that we are striving to build an equitable community within Albemarle County. Uh, and I've heard, you know, the comments, uh, pro and con, you know, for this particular project. Um, uh, we have a, a retreat meeting, a fourth annual this coming Friday. We look at the data of Albemarle County and the disparities in income disparities and wealth disparities and education. Um, and we are modeling towards trying to close those gaps. Um, that does not address the issues of people that do not have income to meet, um, the average house in Albemarle County. But what we are striving to do for the next generation is to preach and teach about what it is going to take to live here. Um, and that's a long-term process. Uh, but the county is inequitable, uh, in a lot of these basic core areas. Um, but we do have people from the community. I include myself in it. Uh, you know, that our parents actually did direct us towards, um, getting a professional career. Um, there are people here sitting in the audience that live in Chestnut Grove, live in Esmond, that have done that. Uh, and not everybody has, but some have. And that's what we're teaching and striving for with the next generation. Mr. Shimp here, um, didn't even take the time to even investigate if there was a community center, a community model, because he doesn't have to. Uh, the system isn't set up to go through us. But a lot of the things that could have been explained, could have been shared, um, just doesn't honor the community as it is right now. And I think you've actually heard those comments. And, um, you know, we're there, you know, under the county premises and auspices to, to actually make change. And, um, he started this project a year ago. Um, and just went around it, didn't involve it. Um, and so here we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak to this? Being none, Carolyn, are there any online? Two online.
I have two people online right now. They have their name, their hand raised. When I ask you to unmute, please unmute and, um, state your name and location. You'll have three minutes to talk and I'll let you know when your time is up. So Ren, if you can unmute, you can get started.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ren Dawson-Olivier. I live in Southern Albemarle, um, on Green Creek Road. Um, I'm speaking to oppose this project. Um, there are many reasons to do so, as noted in the planning staff report. Um, I will focus on two. The first is the need to reduce the amount of greenhouse, greenhouse gases in the atmosphere. Climate change driven by greenhouse gas emissions is here now as evidenced by extreme storms, droughts, heavy rainfalls, flooding and heat waves. The leaders of many nations have committed to achieve zero net greenhouse emissions by 2050. Albemarle County has also adopted this goal. However, according to a member of the county's climate program staff, we are behind schedule in reaching this goal and must step up our game in the quest for carbon neutrality. Protection of our rural areas where so much carbon is sequestered is vital. According to the Piedmont Environmental Council, rural and urban forest and tree cover sequestered over nine hundred thousand metric tons of carbon per year from 2008 to 2016. Roughly sixty percent of the greenhouse gas emissions for Albemarle County for these three years. So you can see why stopping the destruction of the countryside by large-scale development like this proposal is a must. In addition, we must do more to reduce the emissions of greenhouse gases into the atmosphere. The proposed Chestnut Grove development, so far from the nearest commercial areas, is far from the nearest commercial areas. Shopping for necessities by residents, going to work requires both new long vehicle trips and add to the county's already large transportation sector greenhouse gas emissions. Second, we must maintain open spaces to provide habitat for biodiversity and ecosystems. The natural systems of our rural areas not only sequester carbon, they provide many vital ecosystem services and add to our quality of life. I certainly do want to say that I support the low-income housing development, but it should be in the commercial areas near existing amenities. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
All right. Next I have Erin Root. Erin, please unmute yourself. And please state your name and where you're located, and you'll have three minutes to speak also. And I'll let you know when your time is up.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Hi, my name is Erin Root. I speak as a property owner, a mom and a landscape architect who studied water quality as a graduate student and postdoctoral fellow at UVA. I'd like to speak about my concerns for the watershed and the two different scales this development would impact, the regional scale and the local scale. I sent you two images ahead of time, uh, which I hope you received. The first diagrams, the watershed from the site of the proposed development. All surface runoff on the fifty acres of the site goes directly into the onsite flashy creek. The second diagram shows the creek moving through five other properties, including my own, and then into the James River. The creek that starts on the proposed development flows one point nine miles to the James River. To speak to my first concern, the regional scale. The health of the James River and therefore the Chesapeake Bay fluctuates quickly based on how we treat the riparian zones within the watershed. A manufactured home development of this size could significantly impact the larger James River and Chesapeake Bay watersheds by increasing impervious surfaces, leading to increased stormwater runoff, increased potential pollution from wastewater discharge, and impact water quality due to potential improper management of septic systems. All of these could lead to issues such as erosion, altered stream flows and degradation of aquatic habitats. My second concern is the local scale. As mentioned previously, the creek that starts on this property collects runoff from all fifty acres of the site. This creek runs through our property. We, like many other residents, have taken actions to ensure the creek stays clean. We've done this for both our family and the overall health of our waterways. Living on a rural farm allows the privilege of peace of mind that your kids can play in the dirt or stream, knowing it is not contaminated. As our older kids played in the creek and caught minnows and tadpoles, we never worried about the quality of water as we knew where it was coming from and knew it was clean. As our non-month-old grows, we hope she can do the same. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
Do not have anybody else with their hand raised.
All right. Great. Thank you. Um, with that, I'll turn back to the applicant and offer three minutes of time if you'd like to use that to respond to any of the comments we've heard.
Thank you. Yes, Justin Shimp back again. I'll start with a Yancey meeting. I take some exception to that comment that was made because we tried to set up our original neighborhood meeting there, and there was a reason we couldn't. Don't remember what was this point, but it was not available or something like that. And we had to meet the Scottsville Library. Folks came out and they said, you have to go to Yancey. And we weren't required to have a second meeting, but we went and did it anyway. And so in this process, we have engaged with those folks and we tried to start there too. But I, I'll have to look back as to why it couldn't happen, but we certainly are happy to engage with anybody in the community about these kind of issues. We may not agree about them, but we'll certainly engage. The few comments that were made, you know, on the fire and rescue, I spoke to the, those folks in the process review, and they have just added a new shift to the most local fire rescue station that they felt would meet this. And they said they meet their criteria for this area. That station meets their seventeen-minute, I think, criteria. So people can judge, you know, will you be as good a service there as if you are, let's say, on Rio Road or something like that in the heart of Albemarle County, you know, Charlottesville? Maybe not, but Albemarle County felt like they served that. That's something we can maybe address at the board level. The environmental questions that came up, I think we ought to think about this a little bit, about, you know, what this could be, right? The land out there, if you look at the picture, the neighboring land is clear-cut, right? It's pine forest. It's clear-cut and grown again. That has its own impacts. You clear all fifty of these acres and put cattle there, and the cattle can run the stream because there is no WPO buffer for cattle farmers. And those things are okay. That's why I'm not saying those are bad things. But we have to recognize that rural area land, when it's used as rural area land, also has sediment runoff from it. Uh, on the other hand, if you are a developer, you are subject to the Stormwater Management Regulations and things that is a farmer, you're not. So there's a lot of protections in place to deal with these issues that are not applicable to rural area uses that are applicable to developers. There was a question about the, the total, like, water usage. Just to give some perspective on that, in, in the county ordinance, if you're looking at the commercial uses in the rural area, the long-established number has been four hundred gallons per site acre per day. That's considered the upper threshold. So four hundred gallons per acre over fifty acres is twenty thousand gallons a day. So that's just benchmarked what the county sort of standard is, which has been the ordinance for, I don't know how long. But that's why when we looked at a site, the one unit per acre is something to us, knowing what, like, sustainable yields are in groundwater, gives us enough margin that we're way below what that threshold is. So that's something we've taken into consideration. Engineered septic systems like this are monitored. You have to have a licensed installer come out and inspect it. A licensed maintenance individual will inspect it. So you, unlike a private drain field, there's none. So these, these are things that come up that are addressed by virtue of other regulations. You could likewise clear this, you know, clear two acres per six-acre lot, clear twelve acres and put six houses on this. And that would be an activity that no one would blink at. And you have to ask yourself, well, it's clearing almost the same amount of land for six houses. You know, how does that compare to fifty units that are affordable and are meaningful to people in those rural communities who want that housing? And lastly, I heard a couple of words that, uh, just I have to address, and it's equitable and privileged. And I am from a rural area myself, and I hear someone say about, hey, it's good to play in the creek and things like that. I totally appreciate that. But so will the families who live on this property. Because that's an option that's not available to them right now, right? This has a creek and a little pond. And if you live here, instead of an apartment complex somewhere, your child can run down and plant a stream. And that's not a insignificant thing that I think we need to be considering when we think about rural housing like this. Those are privileges that should not be confined to the privilege, the privileged. So I take some exception to that. I don't fault anyone for it. At the same time, it doesn't mean we need to consider those folks who'll have new opportunities who live in those communities. And taking a, um, a look at the equity of housing, again, you would say, we would say, no problem. If we clear this house and put six, you know, seven hundred thousand dollar houses here, that's the normal. So that land can be used for that purpose. But because on the wrong side of the line, it can't be used for the purpose of affordable housing. I think that's also something that strikes me as a little inequitable and that we have to think about. And those are big-picture issues, and it's only brought this forward to trigger those things. I think it's a good project and it should be approved. I look forward to you all's discussions on these things. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, I will close the public hearing. Uh, well, we're public hearings closed. I'm sorry. Yeah, I don't, I didn't see that person.
I read there he raised.
Okay. Can I reopen the public hearing? I have one other person to comment.
You, you've closed the public hearing and there was, uh, there was a sign-up sheet and there's been.
Okay. Apology, sir. Um, all right. Open it up to the commission for discussion. Anybody like to kick us off? Or just discuss? I do have one thing to say. I'm sorry. I said that and I opened it up and I interrupted. I do want to acknowledge Dr. Stacy Pathia who's in the audience, and thank you for coming. Um, if we have any questions related to affordable housing, especially, especially that is her specialty as the Assistant Director of Housing.
I, I did have a question that kind of came up in some of the comments a little bit, and, and perhaps it is about the affordability, just in terms of the, the proffers for how the mobile home park would be managed and the measures to ensure affordability at the levels kind of, you know, listed at the sort of bullet point level.
Great. Sounds like something that maybe Dr. Stacy Pathia could help us with. If you would not mind. Thank you.
Good evening. Stacy Pathia, Assistant Director of Housing for Albemarle County. Um, not entirely certain how to respond to your question. Um, but I can provide some numbers. Uh, and so when we're talking about, um, area median income, the area median income for the Charlottesville-Albemarle region is one hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars annually. So fifty percent of that, which would be for a household of four people, um, puts that at about sixty-two, a little over sixty-two thousand dollars a year. Um, and with that salary, an affordable housing cost is, um, about one thousand five hundred fifty dollars a month. Um, and so that would need to include, um, the, the lot rent, uh, the mortgage payment, your utilities. Um, and it, while transportation costs aren't typically included in that, there is a separate measure of housing plus transportation. Um, and so that should be a little higher than thirty percent, but not excessive. Um, the location of this property does, is, is, is a good distance away from the shopping and, and all those other amenities and jobs. So that would add to the cost of housing. I don't know if that helps.
Yes. Uh, and is, is, so it didn't, basically that gives us a ballpark of what the monthly cost would be for the, the percentage of those units that would be guaranteed at, at fifty percent AMI. Yeah, thanks.
Can you have a discussion? Okay.
Excuse me. Um, yeah. So could someone remind me what the size of the lots are that each trailer was on? I was trying to look that up a second. I can't remember.
He said, uh, about the Belmont parcel size, like forty by one-twenty, but you could not.
Quarter acre, maybe?
Fifty by one-twenty.
Fifty-five by one-twenty.
Oh, yeah, okay. So we, we heard, we heard recently, um, from staff about, and when we were talking about ways to more effectively use the rural area and prevent development of, you know, that, that we were, we wouldn't go below two acres. You know, even if we were clustering.
Oh, you're talking about what we just talked about, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, and, and here, we're, we're talking about going significantly below two acres. Um, so, so that seems to me, um, kind of a, a pretty big discrepancy there. Um, the other thing too is that, you know, and, and maybe staff knows, what's the last time that we? and, and maybe staff knows, what's the last time that we had a, um, an R4 rezoning in, in Albemarle County, in the rural area? Has there been one in twenty years?
Sorry, I'm, I'm not aware of the last time that happened.
Okay, so.
No one remembers.
No, no one, no one remembers, right? So, so that's, that's pretty non-typical. And so and we saw before the, the way that, um, currently, right or wrong, the way that development is rights to determine the rural area, we don't use the, um, we don't use the system of development rights per acre. That's not the system we use in the rural area. We use the system of development rights. Effectively, this would be, um, inventing out of thin air um, a significant number of development rights that don't currently exist. And so from a fairness perspective, if I was a neighboring landowner and said, well, why do you magically get development rights that I don't get? That seems kind of striking to me. And then even in reversibility, the other thing that, that I wonder about is that, even if you could, you know, decide this goes belly up and you're going to remove all the trailer homes and all that, it's still going to be R4. And, and I wonder what that looks like. What does it look like? And what's the odds that the person, you know, someone comes back again and says, hey, listen, we already have this R4 property. The trailer home, the mobile home park was not viable. What happens then? Um, and so, so I have a lot of questions about.
Yeah, well, I guess the whole property would be R4, so they could have a different development plan and put four units per acre. Based on that.
So it's not like it goes exactly back to what it was before.
No, and, yeah. The, the, also the comments, just since on that topic of that it, it can just be reverted. What happens when you have a gravel road, people are driving up and down all day? What you have is what's called effective imperviousness, and I know Justin knows that term, Mr. Schimpf knows that term. Basically, you get enough compaction, it acts like as if it's paved. And so when you try to take that up, when you say you take the gravel out, you see this on old forestry roads. Those scars remain on the road for years and years. You can see where those roads were. So you, you can't just take it up. The impacts of suppressing that soil will remain with that land. It's not, it's not like fairy dust where you can just take it up and it goes back to this wooded situation.
I mean, a- at the same time, I could see, I could see proposal where it would be acceptable to have a mobile home park in the rural area. Um, if you had some sort of system where it was part of like a rural preservation development, even if, you know, even if there's some sort of bonus density, you know, because you could say like, all right, the, the impact of one of these is less than, you know, a, a, a large home on two acres. So maybe you, you know, even if you said, you know, twelve of these, you could say like, oh, it's less impact. So you could, you know, if you had six development rights, therefore you could have twelve of these instead. I could see something like that.
Yeah, we have a cluster ordinance now that allows you to take the development rights and compress the lots to be making up a much smaller footprint and thereby allowing conservation of the rural areas. But the zoning, they're trying to, there, there are questions to change the density from RA to R4.
Yeah, they're trying to apply growth area zoning to the rural area.
The only thing I just make sure we remember is, is proffers. They do, they are proffering.
They're proffering out some of the uses.
Yeah, higher density residential is proffered out, and they're proffering in affordability as well. So it's not like if they leave, there would be just an R4 and you can do whatever you want.
But once it's R4, all it would take is to come, coming back again to, to us and the board supervisors.
To amend the proffer.
Got it. Didn't have to do that.
Nathan?
Yeah?
I didn't think he saw, I'm sorry. I just didn't think he saw you, sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Uh, one, one thing to preface all this is that I do feel like we could really use better emergency services in Southern Albemarle County. Um, you know, just hearing about some of the response times, just is like a little shocking to me. Uh, now granted, I do live off Rio Road, but still. Um, you know, just maybe, maybe something our emergency and rescue services directors could look at anew.
Yeah, it is true. They added additional shift.
But, um, you know, wh- wh- I, I think about homes in the rural area that are, that are more affordable for people who work for wages. And, and we have a, a long history of building those kinds of homes in the county, you know, we had uh, Quality Row, we've got a lot of those more sort of tightly packed affordable homes in, in, uh, Esmond Porters, uh, other parts of the county as well. And, and I don't know, and I'd like to see sometime our existing available inventory of affordable homes in, in Albemarle's rural areas. It's, it's, I think probably shockingly low. And at the same time, we're seeing that people who work here are being priced out and, and leaving the county. Uh, that's not news. We've talked about that for months. You know, I don't, we, we don't have redlining anymore. That's, that's been illegal for some time. I, I do sometimes worry that when it comes to our rural areas where we've replaced redlining with green lining, except when it comes to economic class instead of race perhaps, at least explicitly. And I think there's a lot to be said for adding fifty affordable homes at various levels of affordability at this time of, of severely cost-burdened households. So uh, the idea that lower-income folks would also like to see a little grass while they have a chance to save and build, the little, little savings is, is, uh, I, I would, you know, like to see more about that. I think, um, some of the concerns about water usage, um, fair, but also like, like was mentioned, that's not water that's being trapped in, in crops or whatever. It's water that goes back into the, into the septic eventually in the same water table. The traffic, even with a much higher, uh, number for Chestnut Grove and the added, uh, vehicle traffic is still below two thousand per day, which is still considered low by VDOT. So, you know, like, these are, are things that, sure, are factors, and, and, but I think the opportunity for people who aren't here, because they don't live in this yet, because they haven't been built yet, um, is, is significant.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I, I have a bunch of comments, so why don't you go?
No, you go first.
No, you, uh, well, so I'm all for affordable housing. We've talked about this before. We both took advantage of the program when we were younger ourselves. But appro- approving something like this, just on the basis that it's affordable, is, to me, not enough, because there, you know, we, we just, not too long ago, within the last, I guess, year, voted for expansion of a mobile home park in the Crowes area. But it made sense because it was in our growth area. It was close to services like fire and rescue. I, I sincerely hope that response times will be faster, but we experienced two hours for an ambulance to arrive and take the person to the hospital. Forty-five minutes for the first responder who's a volunteer fireman and doesn't know how to move someone who's in trauma. So it, it is a real problem regardless, even with the county's diligent efforts to add another shift. But you know, the thing is that we have not decided that we want to put, this is essentially a subdivision. It's a subdivision in the rural area. And I, you know, is, how is this different then from another low-income housing subdivision that's not a trailer park, that's just another housing subdivision? You know, our county has decided that we wanted to provide development in the growth area. Now, that's so that we can provide services effectively, but it also means that if you're low-income, like right now, I had, I had a bum tire. I've been putting air in it every four hours just so I can get around, because there's nowhere to get my car fixed in the rural area. But also the fact that, you know, like without that car, I'm sunk. I can't do anything because I live in the middle of nowhere down there. And so thinking about what is our justification for allowing a new subdivision in the rural area? Then why don't we allow subdivisions all across the rural area? As long as it's affordable, yeah. As long as it destine, there you go. Uh, as long as it's affordable, you can have a subdivision anywhere in the rural area that you like. Because that's what we would be basically saying with approval of something like this. So I, I, I think we should have more, um, trailer parks. I think they are a good tool. I don't necessarily buy into the, how affordable they are because of the fact that you really can't essentially afford to move it once you're there. Are you, how are you going to get that seven thousand dollars again? It is taxed as personal property, not as a home. You don't get the tax benefits of owning home, et cetera. But the bottom line for me is that it, I, when I read our comprehensive plan, which I'm beholden to, even though I don't necessarily agree with everything it says, neither do you, but I'm beholden to use that as my guiding document. And it does not support this development in this location. Otherwise, like I said, the rationale is everything that has affordable housing should be allowed anywhere in the county, anywhere in the rural area. If that, if we approve this tonight, that's essentially what we're saying. And if that, again, if, if that's your position, that's fine.
I, I think I have more flexibility on where we might want to build those things.
Yeah, but I think that down in the far, one of the farthest southern reaches of the county, that's very hard to get around. It's hard to get to school. It's hard to get to jobs. It's hard to get a jug of milk. Um, it is, is really, really inconvenient place to put something like this. And I also understand that, you know, from VDOT's perspective, the traffic council, oh, it's hardly any cars on there now and, you know, so what, who cares if there's, you know, another, I don't remember how many it was for, seven vehicle trips per day, whatever they estimated per unit. But it, it's a real change when you're living on a very quiet road like Chestnut Grove, which I had to actually drive every day because our road collapsed. And we waited for many months for VDOT to repair the Hardsfield Turnpike, so I had to drive Chestnut Grove every day to work. Uh, and I, I'm telling you, it's a huge, huge impact, a huge change of the quality of life for people to have that many more car trips on that road. It's not that big of a difference if you're on six. It's not that big of a difference if you're on twenty. It's not that big of a difference on Rio Road or Route twenty-nine. But it's a huge impact on the quietude and enjoyment of that community at that volume, even though from VDOT's standpoint, they're like, the road can handle it. But they don't live there either. So that's, that's where I stand. I just don't think that it meets the comprehensive plan, and I don't see how you can overrule all of the different elements of the comprehensive plan that guide development in the rural area to approve that, to shoehorn this in because it's affordable housing. Affordable housing, I'm all for, but I cannot support it in this location unless we change our comp plan. Right? Which is what we're in the process of doing. But we haven't changed it yet, and we'd be, we're bound by the comp plan that we have.
Other comments? Got thoughts, but. Okay, I just have a, a few thoughts to add. I could probably just say plus one to everything you just said. Um, but I'll just kind of think about, uh, uh, one thing in terms of the commissions and our primary role to serve as advisory body to the board to promote the orderly development of the county and its environment and to accomplish the planning, zoning and land subdivision and development objectives set forth in state law and Albemarle County Code. So that's our role. So I, I struggle sometimes with affordable housing, right? Because I mean, it's a missional thing and we all want it and we need it, and it's important and there's no question about that. My, my view, though, tends to be more about the land use related pieces of it, and hopefully we can accommodate and add space for, for affordable housing where it's appropriate. But getting back to the idea of this location, so I've got the mission, I'm, I'm all on board for the mission, and I've got the sort of site and locational considerations and adequacy of services. And, and it, it pretty quickly sort of starts to go towards how, how can, how can we be approving this? To use your term, a subdivision in the, in the rural area. The one thing I will say is that I, I do think, and looking at council here, that I would probably not use the same language that if we approve this, we're going to approve every other subdivision in the rural area. I think that's, we're not setting precedent. We are.
Or not, but we, we have a hard time arguing against doing it if our only reason is affordable housing.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think that's right.
That's what I'm saying.
Um, and I don't want to take up bandwidth just to restate a lot of things that have already been said, but, you know, things like clearing watershed, the reality of it, the traffic. Um, I hear what the applicant's saying about watersheds, and I also hear the reality of what's likely there. Transportation, you know, we talk about affordable housing so much and we always link it with transportation and how can we actually make those things work and they are essential. So again, I'm, I'm struggling because a lot of what I'm going to say is repeating what everybody else has said, and I won't do that. Uh, but I would not be in support of this proposal. So just from an administrative standpoint, we have three items in front of us. We have the rezoning, we have the special use permit, both of those we need motions on, and we do not need a motion on the request to modify or the, um, special exception. So is anybody ready to make a motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion if we can put the motions up on the screen. So I was have to use my tiny tablet.
We, we start with the, uh, rezoning motions, and then I have a second page for the, uh, the special use permit.
Understood. All right. I move to recommend denial of ZMA two oh two three zero 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 one seven Chestnut Grove manufactured home park for the reasons stated in the staff report.
All right, we have a motion. You have a second? Second? Any discussion, further discussion? No? Call a roll, please.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Nay.
Thanks.
All right, do we have a, we have a second? Sorry, I put my stuff away too quickly.
I move to recommend denial of two SP two oh two three zero 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 twenty Chestnut Grove manufactured home park. Is that the same thing?
This is a different motion because this is on SP.
Right, okay. Thank you for the reasons stated in the staff report.
Awesome. We have a motion. We have a second? Second? Discussion, not, we have the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
And Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Thank you.
You. And there is no action on the special exception, right? All right, thank you, staff. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Appreciate it. We'll move on to the second. Sure, let's take a two minutes. Sure. Take a four-minute recess and we'll reconvene at, it's at seven forty? Time to clear out.
All right, you're live.
Okay, thank you. We are back. And I guess I should re, do I need to re-establish a quorum? No, okay, good. We've all returned. So with that, I'll move on to the second public hearing item and ask for the staff report for SP twenty twenty-four dash twelve City Church Multi-Use Space Edition.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Sid Schiff, and I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division for Albemarle County's Community Development Department. Tonight, I'm giving staff's presentation for special use permit SP twenty twenty-four dash one two City Church Multi-Use Space Edition. This is a special use permit that is amending the previously approved SP twenty twenty-two dash twelve to construct a multi-use building and a parking lot expansion. The subject property is located on the northwest border between the city of Charlottesville and the Albemarle County jurisdictional line at ten ten Rio Road East. It is four point two three acres, zone R4 residential, and the comprehensive plan designates it as urban density residential. To the west in the gray area is the city of Charlottesville, which consists of residential uses. To the northeast and south are institutional uses such as the Charlottesville-Albemarle Technical Education Center, or KTEC, and other churches. Lastly, to the west consists of primarily single-family residential uses. Currently on the site is an existing church, building, two parking areas, and a tier-two personal wireless service facility. Between the two existing parking lots, there are seventy-four existing parking spaces. Currently, there is a shared use parking agreement between the City Church and KTEC, which allows them to use their parking lot for the church services, and that's shown below, um, south of the subject parcel. So the first proposal is SP twenty twenty-four dash one two, which I've, I've said earlier is a special use permit to amend the previously approved SP twenty twenty-two dash one two to allow a thirteen thousand, one hundred square foot multi-use building and a parking lot expansion for up to eighty-seven additional spaces on site. The other proposal is a special exception that the commission is not required to make a recommendation on. However, the commission can provide comments on this special exception, which will be included in the transmittal summary to the board. I'm happy to discuss the special exception at the end of my presentation if the commission is interested. Here is the proposed concept plan if the special use permit and the special exception were to be approved by the board. As I mentioned in the last slide, the applicant's proposing to construct the multi-use building, which is circled in purple, and then, um, the two parking lot areas, which are shown as red. And so the previously approved special use permit was approved in May twenty twenty-three, and it approved an approximately ten thousand, six hundred square foot multi-use space building, which is roughly in the same spot, and then a parking lot expansion for forty-three parking spaces. The area in purple, as I mentioned, is a new larger building, and the areas in red are approximately where the parking lot expansions are located. The applicant will provide further detail regarding their proposal when they, when it's returned. The special use permit application was reviewed under the factors for consideration as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes that the proposed special use permit will not be detrimental to adjacent parcels, will not change the character of the nearby area, will continue to be in harmony with the R4 residential zoning district, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There are five conditions for this application where most were carried over from the previously approved SP. The first is for it to be developed in general accord with the provided concept plan. The major elements are identified as the location of the proposed building, location of parking, twenty-foot buffer along the western property line, and then wooded areas to remain. The second condition is in response to the larger parking area along the entrance corridor, and so that's just um, going above the minimum requirements for landscaping. And then conditions three through five are carryover from the previously approved SP. Condition number five is bolded with a date filled with, well, with a Condition number five is bolded with a date filled with, well, without a date filled because it gets filled in, um, with the date five years after it gets approved by the Board of Supervisors if this were to be approved.
Got it.
And so in sum, there's two positive aspects for this application. One, it's consistent with review criteria for special use permits contained in the zoning ordinance. And the second is that it's consistent with the place's twenty-nine master plan. There was one concern in that the parking lot expansion of a hundred and sixty-one parking spaces would result in a larger parking area along the entrance corridor. Staff recommends approval with the conditions as recommended in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions or go into the special exception if you guys are interested.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
A quick one. On the, on the, the parking, so they're asking to extend beyond the maximum number of parking spaces allowed. So does the county have a parking cap? Or is this just particular site had the limit to these number of spaces?
Yeah, so that's a great segue. I'll just, I'll just go on discussing the special exception. Um, so this is SE twenty twenty-four dash one eight. The special exception is a request to modify the limitation on the maximum number of parking spaces. And so the code allows for this modification limitation on the maximum number, number of parking spaces as provided by the requirement, the minimum requirement for, um, this, this use. And so um, this subsection states the number of parking spaces in a parking area may not exceed the number of spaces required by this section by more than twenty percent. And so this is a proposal and I have a breakdown in the top left. So existing on site are seventy-four parking spaces. The code requires a minimum of a hundred and seven parking spaces to be on the site. And so applying that twenty percent maximum for that, for the site, it would be a hundred and twenty-eight maximum parking spaces. And so for the special exception, the applicant is requesting for a total of a hundred and sixty-one parking spaces, which is approximately fifty percent above the minimum requirement.
Thanks, Sid.
Yep.
Questions? I had a couple of quick questions. One, could you talk a little bit about any ARB involvement you've had with this?
Yeah, so, um, with special use permits, we distribute these, um, to our partners and one of our partners is, is the ARB staff. And so ARB staff reviewed this and they provided, um, what I mentioned earlier about the landscaping, they would need to meet the minimum requirements, but they also suggested because of its um, relative size and, um, since it's next to the entrance corridor, they would like to see it be above the minimum requirements. And so if this were to be approved, it'd be subject to a site plan. And once it gets to a site plan, it would go before the ARB for an actual review from them.
Second question, um, in the parking, maybe the site plan related, I don't see any additional accessible spaces or are those additional spaces that maybe I can ask the applicant to?
Yeah, I think the applicant would, could provide more information. Those would be identified, um, at the site plan stage as well, but I believe that the, in this picture, you can see them on the south side of the existing building. There it looks like.
Yeah, I wondered if they were existing.
Yeah. And so if it were to get to a site plan, staff would verify to make sure that all the ADA parking spaces are in compliance.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, that'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's presentation, please.
Hello, I'm Chris Becker with City Church. I'm the operations pastor there. And I have Thomas Rough with me from the Timmons Group, who will help, help answer questions as well. Um, we were meeting at, um, Charlottesville High School prior to COVID. When COVID came along, we ended up having to move back to the church, the main site, just because it was smaller, we moved over to Charlottesville High School. At that time, um, as we started growing back and people started coming back to church, what really started happening was we were having more kids than is really, uh, a good number for the downstairs. And so we had a good working relationship with the church across the street. So Harvest Church opened up their gymnasium for us, which we use on a regular basis each week. And so we use our first and fifth graders over there. Um, at the same time, we have limited adult space on a Sunday morning as well. So we regularly use the, uh, center, which is about a half mile away, um, in Belvida to, uh, use for adult space. And then with the parking, we do have a parking agreement with KTEC. But when KTEC has sold to the city, now we don't have an indefinite, you know, permanent relationship to have that forever. And so when that relationship went away with the county and the city, that really put it upon us. That's why we were going for the second special use permit. That we felt like we really need to make sure with building the building, that we had enough parking on our space to handle what we needed to do. So right now we have, you have four sites that we use on a Sunday morning. We use KTEC, we use our site, we use Harvest Church and the center for most weeks. And so we'd love just to bring it all onto our site, not have to have people going from all over to utilize it. Um, I know the staff talked about the parking. We have worked to accommodate with just our service schedules. Um, in the spring, we had three services in the morning, um, which on a regular Sunday, we have about five hundred adults and then another seventy kids. And then as we went into the fall, we decided to move to two Sunday morning services and one evening service. So we're trying to help space out where the parking would be. Um, and we found that that's really kind of separated, uh, uh, attendance in a better ratio for the services. But on the same side, we do want to fill up our building too at the same time. So it's, uh, one of the things that we'll continually need the parking for in the future. Um, as well, we've mentioned recently, just, uh, consider carpooling, um, to our congregation as something to consider. Um, but we have lots of people in different zones, serving kids and, um, college students. So there's lots of people using our facility, both on Sunday morning as well as throughout the week. And so we really see that this will help us, you know, be a more permanent presence in our community. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
And I'm not gonna, Thomas Rough with Timmons Group, just wanted to mention that. I'll, we have a couple of slides. Sure. The mouse is not moving. Maybe it's up there. That's why you were saying.
Uh, the magic fairy's coming to help you.
There you go.
Yeah, I was looking, uh, the wrong screen as tradition, right? Uh, so these, these two slides at the beginning really just covered again the site and, uh, just adding a little bit of context to, to Chris. Um, and you all heard a little bit about that. So what's shown here is the twenty twenty-three rezoning, uh, which was, uh, and I've got a site plan as well after this, but just to show the difference, uh, the previous was a ten thousand six hundred square foot building, multi-person building, uh, with forty additional parking spaces. Um, and, uh, and then looking for, and, and that was approved but never constructed. And there's no additional seats in that sanctuary building. And just to note, denote, there's going from ten thousand six hundred to thirteen thousand square foot. The majority of that, actually the, all of that is through adding a mezzanine level in the building. So the actual footprint of that building is not changing from the previous approval. Um, but there are the, uh, now a hundred and sixty-one total parking spaces. That's the, the bigger difference. Um, again, the site, uh, you guys are familiar there. This was the, uh, previous, uh, zoning, uh, approved, approved zoning. So there's the, you can kind of see a little bit. I'll see if I can flip back and forth. You can see a little bit, the existing parking. Um, there's some expansion and slight delineation of parking that's there. There's a little bit of gravel parking today. This is kind of, that was the, and then the extent today is to, uh, expand that parking to take up a bit more of the space. Um, to reference some of your discussions about parking and the need, um, we have worked with the, the church as, 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 as Chris mentioned, to, to shift some services, but also uh, we've done counts during about six different services throughout the year and kind of tracked that. And, um, so we're roughly, roughly are in the one fifties, uh, per, for their max peak during the, so that one sixty-one will fit the maximum without needing to go onto the KTEC or across the street or other, uh, locations and things like that. Um, there is significant sufficient space along the, uh, the, the Rio corridor to do landscaping, buffering changes. The exact layout of this parking lot, we've, we've looked at it a little closer. There's a lot of opportunities to work with ARB to improve that buffering landscape. So we, we see that there. And then, um, you can see behind the addition, proposed addition is that stormwater management. I know that was a concern, um, that, you know, obviously for off-site, we're not treating the off-site runoff and off-site questions, but for this site, the additional parking, the additional impervious area, that'll be treated, uh, with an appropriate stormwater management facility as we work into the site design process. Uh, and then, yeah, just to highlight where those additional parking spaces are. But, uh, and that's, that's pretty much, that's all we have and nothing too detailed, but certainly happy to take any questions that you all would have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, I know you're not really into the site design process yet, so, but because you are, there is concern about impervious surface and because you are going over the maximum in terms of the parking spaces, have you thought about other ways that you could add some quality, um, and to the stormwater treatment that you're doing there, whether it be, um, having, um, previous parking spaces or having a biofilter instead of retention basin or o- other ways that you could increase, um, water treatment on the site?
Absolutely. Um, certainly with the amount that you can kind of see in the layout, we have, uh, there's a little more opportunity on that north, north corner where there's a little bit of, uh, space between the parking lot spaces to build in a little bit more green space and landscaping to break up the, the amount of, uh, impervious that's on that north side. Uh, but we do, we are looking at kind of some of those different treatments when pulling in, uh, adding to what's there to, to make sure we're not, uh, you know, again, we're going to treat everything on site and we're going to try to, uh, over, you know, we, we, from a cost perspective, we are reviewing a number of those kind of, what to do with parking stalls that could be, you know, more pervious or uh, made with different materials to help with that end. But, but certainly it's not fully designed at that.
Great. Um, I'll just add too, that one of the nice benefits is that, you know, if you, you can have a, a retention basin that's not really good for anything, that's sort of like wasted space on your site, or you can have a biofilter that's an attractive feature that's actually adds value, um, to your site that, you know, something attractive for people to look at.
Yeah, we could just tag on that really quickly. I mean, you know, you're asking for something more than what the county allows. And so for that, I, I would hope to see some more progressive stormwater management techniques than just a stormwater pond. Um, you're, if you did decide to go with permeable parking spaces, you can still have the travel way, regular, um, you know, road surface. But I'm sure you have older parishioners and certainly those types of treatments don't freeze in the winter because the water goes through and doesn't sit on the surface. So they're getting out of their car, they're not as likely to trip and fall. Um, the other aspect is you could kill two birds with one stone, which is a terrible thing to say, but, uh, if you had you, a biofilter along, you know, as part, meeting your landscape requirements at the same time you're treating your stormwater. So you're giving the ARB some extra beauty in the plant palette, but it's also a stormwater management feature and perhaps a, you know, could even have a sign on how you're, uh, fulfilling God's mission by conserving the earth better than what the minimum was. So anyway, just some, some thoughts. I just think that I'd really like to see, and maybe before you go to the board, you could put some thought to this, uh, about, because we've got a pretty green Board of Supervisors too, and I, I think you're asking for more. And so as a result, it'd be nice to see more on the green side.
Absolutely. And again, the parking lot as designed was really meant to fit that one sixty-one. And we've, we've already thought through some ideas on how to reshape that to make more room for the.
Yeah, even, yeah. So I don't want to get into drawing on your site for you. It's not, it's not my job. I'm not supposed to do that. So. Yeah, but that, that's really all I had. I guess real, uh, I did actually one quick question though. Um, did you actually indeed talk to the, your, the new landlords of KTEC? Um, I, I understand that Alamo County, you know, it's been sold, but have you tried to work with the city?
We've talked with them in the past, but have not talked since the sale. No.
I don't know. I think it would be more compelling for your argument if you tried and they, they rebuffed you.
Understand. Yeah, we'll definitely do that. But I see for indefinite, that could be a challenge for them to, to say yes to that.
Yeah, I understand. And you're also hoping to really construct that new building. And so you will have the, the demand. And I, I also understand you've tried to ask people to carpool more and, but they're coming from different places and taking kids to soccer and running around and it's hard to get them all.
It's a challenge.
Coordinated. Yeah, maybe, maybe a couple of church buses. I don't know. I'm done.
Thanks. I just had a couple of questions. One, related to the parking, I'm just curious, and I know this was a previously approved plan, right? Did you all consider at any point the proposed building being located so that it sort of creates an L shape with the existing building and bifurcates that parking? So you don't have one, two, two sixty-foot parking lots together, but this strikes me that that building's about sixty feet wide. And it's about as long as that second bay of parking. And if you could break it up, you know, it would help to.
Wouldn't feel like such a sea of asphalt.
Sea of asphalt.
Certainly, yeah, during, when we were grading, grading out where, you know, you can see the, the severe grading on the back corner and that.
Yeah.
Trying to keep the level, there, there's already a little bit of misleveling between the existing building and the proposed building. And so there's a, um, you know, that, that's created a bit of a challenge on the site there. And so if we shift any of the parking around, getting vehicles and the ADA challenges of getting them back into the main part of the site, I think becomes a little challenging, but certainly we can.
Might be worth looking at. I mean, yeah. Yeah, I, I just, I mean, it just strikes me that that's a flat sixty-foot wide roughly area that's about the same size as the flat sixty-foot wide parking.
And look how close the contour lines are here versus there.
Yeah, but it's still flat.
Ish.
I don't know. Just a thought. Um, second thing is, you know, the whole adage about building the parking for Easter Sunday kind of thing, right? Where you're just loading it up based on the maximum need. And, um, you guys have done a great job in the past of sharing parking. I would also encourage you if, if we, you know, if the county does agree to this special exception, I don't know if there's a way to share parking when you're not needing with others around so that they can reduce their parking requirements. So it's sort of like flipping what you've been able to accommodate, but on weekdays when you don't need it as much.
Yeah, totally. So when KTEC asks us to use their, our parking lot when needed, not students, students try to get over it, but when, uh, staff need it or if they have a special day over for KTEC, we totally are amenable to that and allow them.
Open it up for them to come.
We let, let them come over, you know, they have special building days or something and they just want to have their staff there. It's like totally, we are their bomb shelter at this point. Um, and so we have a good working relationship with them. But just the concern about when it got sold, that really kind of triggered it all.
Sure. Okay. Also it would save you guys money if there's a way to think through that process as well. Last question is, had you thought about phasing the parking in or are you thinking it's all happens all at once, assuming you have the funds?
From a cost perspective, doing it all at once is, is, is the best option for the church kind of doing one construction plan. Um, but certainly we have talked about, you know, with, with, as, you know, as the funding comes through for the entire project is how to work that up with what the, the staff is doing or with not the staff, with what the parishioners are doing and coming in and, and what those numbers look like over, over time. So we don't want to overbuild. Uh, but again, Chris is keeping a good track on that. And as we mentioned, went from, I think some of the peaks were closer to two hundred, you know, and then they shifted to three and four services to spread that out. So we've tried our best, uh, to, to reduce that peak demand and, and hopefully keep that, keep it not too invasive.
Awesome. And then the last thing I'll just say, and you'll, you guys know the suppose I do, but if you're asking for a special exception to go up to, what is it, a hundred and sixty-one spaces?
Yes, that's correct.
From twenty to six, to fifty percent?
Fifty percent more.
Yeah, from twenty percent more to fifty percent more. And this is outside of this discussion, but just thinking about not tying that to the approval of your site plan so that if you do find funding issues, you don't have to go to the full fifty percent. You can just go to the twenty percent. And then phase that second in. Okay, I think that's it. Any other questions? Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? It's looking pretty empty. Anybody online?
And a board staff.
All right. Do you like to speak to any of those comments? All right, well, this is the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion. Would you like to kick us off or offer a motion?
Glad to have a motion if they're on the screen, when they're on the screen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a good problem that their church is so successful.
Yeah.
It sounds like they've tried really hard to work on the scheduling. And I think I've already made all my comments about how I want to see their green church fulfilling God's mission, but I don't have anything else to add.
And I've also seen, uh, it's really, I didn't ask the question because I've seen the, the, the traffic management coming in and out of there on Sundays and it's well done, you know? Just, I live just up the road, so, um, yeah, I don't want to block rest of discussion, but I can make a motion.
That's it all. I don't have anything else to say.
Nothing else to say here.
All right. Well, I move to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-four triple zero twelve City Church Multi-Use Space Edition with the conditions stated in the staff report.
You have a motion and a second? Second? Any discussion? Carol, I could you call a roll, please?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we have, we don't have to make a motion on the special exception, but do we want to add any recommendations other than the ones that we've already stated in terms of impervious surface and?
Maybe the minutes could just reflect the discussion that we hoped that they would use, um, low-impact development, you know, constructed green infrastructure techniques to, such as pervious part pavement or. you know, constructed green infrastructure techniques to, such as pervious part pavement or bio swales to make the site more attractive, safer and more resilient.
Well said. All right, thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on if I can find my agenda.
Good luck with the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
It feels so funny with only four of us. I feel like we're not having a real meeting.
I know.
I know.
Like if just we're hanging out.
All right, we will move on to committee reports. Any updates?
I do.
All right.
The Rio 29 CAC met last week. We got reports from staff on a few things. One is Microcat, which of around 20 or so microtransit peers around the state, we are the fastest growing.
The fastest growing Microcat?
Well, it's not called Microcat elsewhere, but it's micro transit. Yeah, yeah, micro transit projects. There's quite a few around the state. We've had 50,000 rides since the launch, worked about 10,000 rides a month now.
Great. Wow, that's working.
Yeah, it's it's really working. The top locations are Almaral High School, Fashion Square, Walmart, Mallside and the DMV.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
On Pantops.
Uh, yeah.
You don't have license plates. How do you drive to the DMV, right? You know, those kind of things.
Uh, it was interesting that the the map, the service map did have to expand to include Almaral High, because so many students wanted to use it for that. Yeah.
Student drivers on the road is a good thing.
You know, if they've added vehicles or is it?
I think it's still five.
Five.
And one for Pantops, but they can kind of swap around.
Got it.
I don't think it's expanded in its number, but it's, yeah, very successful. There are some late times at peak times, of course. But now it's kind of a matter of trying to figure out, you know, budgeting for it for.
Yeah, interesting to see if they add some more.
Did they have numbers, numbers about like data about like citizen appreciation or like?
Uh, I didn't ask for like their their, you know, star rating, but I mean, it's it's widely, uh, uh, you know, lauded and and and, you know, people, people really enjoy it. The most common comment and complaint really is just that the, from city people, they're like, you know, we want to go into the city. And so trying to coordinate with with City of Charlottesville will be something in the future as well.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. And, you know, is the city willing to do something like it, you know, because there's definitely demand.
You know, as we've thought about joint city-county planning commission meetings, transportation was one that's come up in the past. That would be an interesting sub-agenda item to talk about.
Yeah. Also had a a nice report from staff on affordable housing, covered some stats. And of course, the, one of the key takeaways to to quote a former New York City mayoral candidate is the rent is too damn high. But other than that, also there's a new, and I didn't realize this, affordable dwelling unit interest list that is being piloted. Yeah, I hadn't heard about this yet.
No, I didn't know that either.
And so it's for, they're starting off a pilot with the public workers that are income qualified. Where essentially developers and landlords can can market units directly to them. That started just a few months ago and it'll open up to all qualified people sometime next year.
Is there any, do you know if they had any thought to open it up to business businesses to take advantage of? Like, I spent a lot of time looking for affordable housing for my employees.
Oh, yeah, interesting.
We grew from six people to 20 and I, you know, I was looking for people.
Yeah.
I was calling around, looking at rents. I was using the website, but I I don't see, or maybe small businesses or some way that.
Yeah, might be a good question for a.
Yeah, just ask like maybe if nonprofits could use it, you know, nonprofit businesses or small businesses.
I don't know the answer to that, but I bet Stacy Pethy might.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the last part also on housing, she talked a lot about vouchers, the different voucher programs in the county. About 500 people total in the county that that take advantage of 500, yeah, that take advantage of of housing vouchers. One thing of note, just in this political climate, is that all those vouchers are ultimately funded by HUD. And so there has been a reserve in the past, but HUD has taken it away because of all the spikes in housing prices across the country. And so we'll see if any political football makes those vouchers, you know, tenuous.
Cool. The other committee reports?
I do.
That's bad.
I I can't, I feel like we meet all the time now, so I hopefully this is not an old report. Historic Preservation Committee met and we went over the comprehensive plan goals and objectives. I don't remember if I reported on that last time or not.
I think you did mention.
Maybe I did. Did I? Yeah, okay. Well, I'm still, I'm still riding high on the wave of the fact that we met. But they they did, they did make the edits that the committee made. And so then now they're just trying to refine them. But I think we're getting those in February, maybe.
Margaret Backewell?
Yeah.
Perhaps, I don't know that particular.
Something like that. Anyway. So I don't really have a report.
Do they else want to restate their report?
All right.
Oh, you do.
Oh, I just say it's not official committee of the of the planning commission, but I did, you with the National Heritage Committee. And we we did go through, and we've been also looking at the water protection ordinance and the and the rural areas plan. And I believe that you all received a a letter from National Heritage Committee recently with some of our comments. So awesome.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we'll move on to review the supervisors meeting from December 4th. Mr. Barnes?
So thank you, Mr. Chair. December 4th, Midway Martin, which was the power line upgrade, if you all recall, southwest portion of the county, southeast, excuse me, went to the board for their consideration and was passed without without much comment.
That's not the one that was on Lynch, Old Lynchburg Road, is it?
No, it was not the one on Lynchburg. This was the one that was, uh, co-op was taking the power, upgrading that existing power line, going from the H poles to single monopoles.
Yeah, it's, thank you.
The board did have a special meeting on on the 6th as well. That was to talk about their legislative priorities. And then just tomorrow night, there's not, there's nothing else on the the agenda, but they are reviewing an item to pass ordinance to support a regional transit authority. So interesting thing. I thought you all might be interested.
Awesome. Thank you. AC 44, I know you touched on that before.
Don't really have much more to add.
Okay. And we have, I guess we have sort of an updated schedule, the schedules, we know what's coming in January, February.
You said the two meetings. I was just curious if did any of them start at four? I can tell you.
Your general preference, your general preference on those two meetings, one of them,
I know we were.
Your general preference to start at six, because what I, the first one that will be on the 14th is a public hearing on the solar ordinance and then a public hearing on a a private item. The one on the 28th, right now I only have one private sector agenda item. And then we'll be talking about Parks and Recreation. I could schedule the public hearing first that night and we could do the presentation on the Parks and Rec afterwards, if it's more convenient for you all that night to meet at six. I I realize I've been asking a lot of you all's time of late.
It is hard to get off work early for me at 3:30.
Yeah, so if it's not a really heavy public hearing night, then we can combine it with a with, I remember two public hearings like tonight, I think.
Too much.
It's too much. But yeah, otherwise, if it's one or it's a pretty straightforward report, like the Parks and Rec, opposed to a lot of discussion, then we should just have it as.
Burt Mart flats.
Yeah, the other item is Burt Mart flats, which I believe you all reviewed before, but I'm not completely 100% sure about that one. Anyhow, it's been a long day for me too. Appreciate what you all are saying. My intent would limit the number of time this is, how do you come in at four?
I will say, I think the the first meeting in the new year is January 14th, right?
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, I've got a a work trip that that day. So, I mean, obviously the quorum can be achieved without me, but when it comes to signing up for committees and whatnot, I might need to.
You might end up being chair.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah, no, I might need to email my my committee preferences ahead of time.
Perfect. Awesome. Any items, old, new business?
No, sir.
Old business?
I'm living in the past, as you know.
Items for follow-up?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, with that, I will adjourn Planning Commission to Tuesday, December 17th, next Tuesday at 4:00 PM. Thanks, everybody.